Anya, can you hear us?
Good morning, can you hear me? Good morning.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Test one, two.
Test, how are we doing?
There you go, that's better, we talk over each other, that's what we should practice.
To get the real feel?
Just like, what's her name, that finally quit, she was nothing, not one thing, and it was work, I don't care. I didn't buy her story all along.
This is so equity, or you were just talking, it was a little equity effect, we just do it one more time, just go to test, test one more time.
Testing, testing.
Mary, you use different language on the minutes, was there a reason you did that? In the introductory paragraph? The language that we used on the 28th, okay. That must be in civic clerk somewhere or something. Thank you. How many folks are with us on Zoom?
Good, good morning, 8:15, we'll bring the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors into session, the first thing on our agenda is a work session with Dubuque County engineer Anthony Varshet, good morning Anthony.
Okay, good morning, you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, well, I hope everybody had a good fourth, good to get back though, so we got busy agenda today. So one thing I want to bring up today, I guess the first item here, is a discussion regarding our licensed land surveyor position with the county. So a couple of months ago, I have a similar position over in Delaware County, a licensed land surveyor that decided to take a different position with the DOT and left me with a vacancy in Delaware County. So being that, that is very difficult to find land surveyors to begin with, and so I've had some discussion with staff and even discussed this a little bit with the Delaware County supervisors, about the potential of sharing our land surveyor with Dubuque County with Delaware County, and so that's a discussion I want to kind of get into with you guys today. You know, we've set some precedent with myself and Craig Davis from Delaware County in sharing both, between both counties and, you know, trying to figure out what that right percentage is, and, you know, just coming up with the responsibilities that work for both sides. I think, you know, with Wyatt Anderson's position, he's a licensed land surveyor for Dubuque County, I think he's the type of person that can also make this dual between both counties, and, you know, there's going to be days or weeks where, you know, he's going to be working more than 40 hours, or he'll be right into his 40 hour shift, but it's, to me, it's an interesting idea to pick a look at, and I think that's kind of the future of, you know, at least for my department, how government might move, kind of streamline efficiency between, you know, sharing across jurisdictions. So respectfully, I'd like to discuss today, sharing Wyatt Anderson with Delaware County, and see what your thoughts are with this idea. So Don was able to come up with this, this calculation, breakdown of salary, and what this shows here is a breakdown of what his, what Wyatt's current pay is, and he's on a 32 hour per week shift with Dubuque County, so he's not officially full-time, we moved him to a 32 hour a week a few years ago. And then, then on the second column there, it shows what Delaware County actually paid for the, oh, sorry, the third column would be what Delaware County paid for the wages and benefits of the land surveyor in Delaware County. So what we're showing here is a breakdown of a 65-35 split between the, between both sides. So currently Wyatt is making $103,750 when it comes to wages and benefits from the first column. What we've looked at, what the responsibility is going to take on between both counties, we're looking at a revised salary of $115,000 with the added benefits, which would come up to $156,143. And then again, on the third column, it shows the breakdown of what Delaware County was paying for the licensed land surveyor. And then if we look at breaking that down between both counties, 65 split, 65% split for Dubuque County, 35% for Delaware County, it effectively shows savings for both sides. For Dubuque County, there'd be a budget savings of $2,257.34. Delaware County would look at a $28,850.54, which is quite a savings for Delaware County. This, this percentage breakdown doesn't necessarily have to be in stone, you know, we could look at adjusting this just a little bit, but this is just kind of a starting point for discussion, to see what, what your thoughts are. Again, I'm very interested in this idea, and I know Wyatt is as well, and he's the type of person that can, I think, can really take on the extra extra load he's going to have to deal with, and balance the, the both sides. So yeah, that's just kind of throwing out there for discussion with you guys, and, and see what your thoughts are.
I'm having a great deal of trouble hearing you Anthony, are you green?
Yeah, I'm green, yep.
We need a longer mic there, that's like...
I think I need a view right here.
Right, but, I mean... Right. There's a tremendous amount, you can't hear anything with these blowing behind us. So Wyatt currently works for us?
That's correct, yep.
With only 32 hours a week.
Correct, yep.
I'm going to ask this, it's a really awkward question, why does Delaware County have so much more budget savings than we do?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you look at the salary breakdown and benefits of what the old position was, which comes with $83,000, yeah, but you effectively look at 35% sharing of the new revised salary, it's quite a savings for Delaware County. Now that said, I'm not opposed to going like a 60-40 split, to show a better savings for Dubuque County, and, you know, a little less savings for Delaware County. With that said, you know, Dubuque County will have, you know, the majority of Wyatt here, even if he's working on something for Delaware County, he's mostly going to be based out of Dubuque County, in the office.
And what is the cost share with your salary, is it 60-40, is it?
70-30.
70-30, and is that what we see here, 70-30?
So you're looking at 65-35 right there? Also, to give you a kind of comparison, for Craig Davis, it's a 60-40 split for him. So Delaware County picks up 60%, Dubuque County picks up 40% in the salary.
And you're proposing this because you think this is most fair, in your opinion?
Well, this is, I wouldn't say this is the most fair, you know, this is just a figure that we've kind of come up with. You know, I'm looking at this, you know, and discussing with the supervisors over in Delaware County, I think they're going to lean on whatever we can decide here, because we are in need of a surveyor over there. Now, when it comes to licensed land surveying, you know, the need is not as great in Delaware County. You know, there's, there's a little bit less like land acquisition type stuff going on over there versus, or plat work going on versus Dubuque County, so Wyatt will definitely be busier and more, and house more in Dubuque County side. But the need is definitely there to, you know, do certain licensed land surveyor type, type work over there. So again, I'm not necessarily sold or set on 65-35, you know, if we could, we could even look at a 60-40 split, and it would make, you know, I still, I still think it'd make both sides look pretty, pretty good as well, as far as the cost savings.
You'd save a little more, and Delaware County wouldn't save quite as much, but I think it's a little fairer split.
Well, I ran the calc's here, and so what, what the, if you ran a 60-40 split, Dubuque County would be saving just over $10,000, and Delaware County would be saving just over $21,000, so it's, it's still a very fair situation on both sides.
I'd like to see it reflect the amount of time the person's going to spend, in that, you know, whatever the cost is, is the cost. We do know in Dubuque County, land surveyors, we've been told that by our private surveyors, that it's very difficult, and as they age, there's not lots of options following behind them, so that's a concern that, that industry has locally. So getting it right is, I think, is a good thing, you think you're being proactive and looking at cost sharing. And I would defer to you, I think, when, how the, you think the time's going to be spent is probably what we should be paying for our share.
You know, the time is such a kind of difficult thing to nail down, you know, even look at my time or Craig's time, you know, there was a point where, especially for myself, I was trying to track my hours, and I still, I still track my hours, but, you know, I think the Delaware Board was, was wanting to see my timesheets and make sure that I was giving them 30%. Well, there's times I give them 50%, there's times I give you 90%, you know, it just, it just varies so much based on what we have going on, or what we're doing. I always like to say, we're going to get the job done, you know, no matter, you know, what's going on in both counties, we just make sure that the job is done. You know, we could certainly look at breaking down Wyatt's time between both counties, just to kind of, you know, let's see what that looks like for the first six months, to kind of make sure that we are on the right percentage, but, you know, again, there's going to be weeks where he's going to be a little bit busier in one county versus the other, and it's, it's not going to necessarily be accurate to this, but overall, I do see this working between both sides, and the work getting done between both counties.
Well, from my experience, it's, as far as sharing, it's been working very good, led to employees in your department, so well done, it's probably a lot of management and logistics behind the scenes, so it seems like it's been working, and it's a benefit to both counties. My question, so I'm generally supportive of more of this concept, diving into the dollars more, and maybe Don can jump in here as well, when you do the math on the hourly wages, there's a significant increase for this new position. Why that, why that increase, and what do you see the challenges that they'll face in this job that would warrant those increases?
Sure, one of the things we had to take a look at with Wyatt is, with him currently on the 32 hour per week schedule, he, he moved to that kind of schedule several years ago to kind of abate his side business he has going on, he has a private business that he works kind of like Friday through Sunday, you know, kind of part-time thing, or even on the, on the, on the weeknights. For him to take on this kind of duty is going to really cut into that quite a bit, and, you know, might even almost eliminate his side business, or definitely, definitely cut into it quite a bit as far as taking on that extra day. So that's one thing we had to take a look at, that, you know, the amount of wages he'd be using, losing to give up the private world to take on both counties. And then just strictly, just looking at sort of the responsibility between the two counties, you know, there's, there's a lot of sort of mental and, you know, wear and tear on yourself, and, you know, it's a greater responsibility to be, you know, taken on both sides, and and you just look at, you know, what licensed land surveyors are making out there, they're not making this, but they're, they're rare, you know, they're hard to find, and that wage scale is starting to move up for just the single job situation, and then you start throwing on an extra county on them, you know, I just feel like the responsibility is greatly increased, you know, for what he's... he's currently doing. So, just kind of coupling all that together.
I'd be interested in seeing some of the other county comparisons on their land surveyors. And if you had a private market, I'd be interested in that. I'm generally supportive, I just think the wage increase is pretty drastic. And I think also the hourly component changes. So, if you maybe put it on a per-hour rate, you can be able to see, and that's what I did, so in my math was $42 to $55 an hour. That's just the salary piece, not the benefit component.
Another thing we took a look at too is Craig Davis, our assistant. He moved to right around $110,000 or so when he first decided to share, what about six years ago now? So, he had a pretty healthy increase as well, you know, with the amount of work that he took on, but it was a pretty good increase from what he was making beforehand as well. So, we could take a look at that from what he went to to what he's at now and kind of compare that to, you know, what we're proposing here as well.
And one thing, I agree with you, Anthony, a lot of it was retention of the individual who's currently doing that position and making it work for him personally to, you know, put in those extra hours, learning new systems with the new county. So, yeah, it's considerable increase. We would also move him to a salaried position, which is now he's hourly. So, we know that that means there are going to be weeks he's going to be putting in more than 40 to get it done, and recognition, we're moving him to an exempt position as
And then who would be carrying this forward with the Delaware County supervisors? Don, are you going to be in the HR discussion? Or Anthony, are you? Or do you need a supervisor? I mean, what's the way forward here?
I would probably be the mediator between the two counties. So, I would be in connection with the supervisors, that direct connection. You know, certainly Don could be involved with that as well. But we would have to draw up the 2080 agreement, and then I suppose it would start on their end first and then be finalized on this end.
It seems we have consensus we should explore it. Is that where my colleague...
Yeah, I would definitely explore it. I think the only, you know, I think the numbers, getting the numbers right and the percentages. I think you've heard some concern about those. So, if you want to come back with a second proposal and some of the research, I'd be interested on that salary, you know, because you could flip it the other way. And so, if surveyors are in such high demand, maybe this employee would go private 100% and make that or more. And so, you know, is this a fair and balanced proposal? That's what I'm looking for. And right now, I feel the numbers are a little high. I like the concept.
We should move forward with it, see what we can come up with a pretty equitable split. Definitely move forward with it.
We will plan on coming back in a couple of weeks then for my next work session then.
That's great.
Okay, next, if the board would like, we can move into the engineer's report. For our Cedar Ridge Road paving project, that project is now complete. Kane and Kemp Roads, that project is complete as well. English Mill Road, River City Paving is planning to start paving operations today. The road will be closed to one-lane construction during the paving process. Chick-fry is also currently removing pavement near the Creston Ridge Road area. Carper Harbor Road Bridge, Tera Construction is working on the substructure of that bridge presently. McAllister Road, Tera Lane culverts. Eastern Iowa Excavating started removing the box culvert at McAllister Road last week, and they'll be setting the railroad tank cars this week. That one should go pretty quick. I'm expecting in about three weeks timeframe for that project. Various culverts, what I call progressive structures, is finishing the culvert replacements on Schulte Lane, and they'll be moving on to work on Buncombe Road. And then Simon Road Bridge, Tera Construction is currently working on the substructure of that bridge. So, we had an email from a concerned resident over the weekend, just concerned about the amount of closures we have going on in the southwest part of the county. It just will happen if all the contractors decide to kind of work on those projects at the same time. So, with McAllister, Carper, and Simon Road all close, it does kind of create a, not a dead-end situation, but it's more of a run-around situation for people. Like I said, McAllister should be done in a few weeks, so that should alleviate that situation. Simon Road, they're moving on that pretty fast, and then Carper, they're starting to complete the substructure area, work for that bridge. I do anticipate Carper and Simon to be done before harvest is started. So, that should help the producers quite a bit in that area. And then also for Steger Road, Tera Construction is currently working on the substructure of that bridge as we speak. So, that's pretty much it for our projects. There's just kind of a breakdown of the, some pictures of what each project looks like right now. Any questions for what's going on for projects? I like the photos, helpful. Actually, gave me a chance to get out and look at every single project and take them myself, and so it's kind of a dual purpose.
Definitely making progress.
Yeah, the way things are moving this year, I think we're going to have another kind of early construction season year and have everything kind of wrapped up by early fall.
When are they figuring on doing Horseshoe Road?
So, right now, they're planning on about the first week of August. They're going to do Horseshoe, Military Road, North Cascade Road, and Shootah Heights Road. They should buzz through those pretty quick because it's just a fill-in fill. So, I would expect all those roads to be done within two to three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. And we are working with the city of Balltown as well. They've requested to be a part of that project now, so we're going to be working out those details with those guys. Isn't that, that's pretty much what we have going on.
When will we have Chandra Ravda coming to talk about that?
Today at 10:45, I believe. He's on the agenda.
Okay, sorry, 10:45. All right, there it is, DMAT. So, we have some big things still hanging. Piastah discussion, truck route discussion.
Yep, sundown.
Sundown. There's, I mean, there are some big issues here pending with the roads department. You know, just kind of summarizing early and being like, "Well, that was a great report." It is a great report. The Class C roads, you know, that's an issue that's in, you know, that we need some help with. Legislation changed. So, do you foresee just kind of bringing those up generally to us? Do you have general questions for us about those issues?
Yeah, I'd like to bring them back as, you know, as future work session items in the near future. You know, certainly that Class C legislation change, it sounds like there's new legislation out there that says that you cannot have a segment section of Class C road. It has to be from access point to access point. Now, I'm presuming that the legislature meant intersection-to-intersection instead of somewhere in the middle. That's the interpretation we've got to figure out. Is it driveway-to-driveway or is it intersection-to-intersection? You know, what do they consider access points? If they, if it truly is interpreted as intersection-to-intersection, you know, we've got lots of Class C roads in this county that are going to be lifted all of a sudden and taken off gates. And it's not some, it's, it sounds like the legislature is, looks back, not just forward. So, it tries to eliminate anything that's on the books as well as going forward. So, that's something we need to dig in a little bit further with CJ or certainly maybe get ISAC involved, ISAC Council, to see what the true interpretation or intent is of that.
I wonder, Ed, if you can, if Ed can be helpful to you, Anthony, and stretch your day, if that's something he can help you...
I know, Ed, you were watching that bill. You had sent me some information on it, so I know you were aware of it. Yep, yep, perfect.
And then also signage on the southwest arterial. There's really not good signage for the airport. You know, how do you get to the airport from the southwest arterial? Tale of two people leaving Asbury, 24 years and age apart. My dad gave up. Said, "I'm never using that road again. It goes nowhere." Just didn't think he could, couldn't see the signs, got lost. And then, of course, my husband did fine, and, you know, it's intuitive, right? But some signage might be helpful there.
That interchange when you get to the south, 151, could be better. That's my comment as well.
And then that's where, you know, they're right on to Old Davenport Road.
Yep.
So, again, I know that you're working on that, it's just...
That is a problem for us though. I mean, it's a present problem. We're dealing with the semis down there, I'm still getting phone calls and emails from people and, you know, yeah, we're going to get some signage, better signage put up there, but it's not going to stop the problem. You know, it's a problem that we're going to have to keep dealing with and probably something we're going to have to discuss in this long-range plan is how do we, how do we deal with that gap section down there? You know, driver behavior wants to keep going south, not turn off there.
Are they, is the state collecting any information about the numbers of people using the arterial?
So, they are, I'm glad you brought that up. So, they are currently, you've probably seen the traffic counter tubes out there all over the place. So, they're presently counting traffic throughout Dubuque County. So, this will be a very important count year, obviously, for, to get data for the southwest arterial. How many people are really using that? And then what percentage of trucks are going that route as well? You know, that was obviously one of the big reasons why the southwest arterial is put in is to be a truck diversion route to get around Dubuque. So, that's going to be a good count to have to understand, is it really working? Is it doing what it's supposed to be doing? And then, you know, same thing with Old Temple Road and Shootah Heights Road, we'll see what those counts are. You know, if they've taken a dramatic increase from the 2017 count, well, we know why. You know, it's because the southwest arterial is pointing people in that direction.
Do we learn the results of those traffic counts?
They should have the maps produced sometime this winter, I think.
This week?
This winter.
Oh, winter.
Yeah. They're hitting, they're hitting a lot of northeast Iowa, I believe. So, as soon as we get that traffic data, we can, we'll definitely share that with you guys and...
Right. I see Mayor Kennecker joined us from Sageville, and he texted to me and emailed to me if you want to just kind of bring my colleagues up to speed on what that is about. Just generally his concerns about the transaction with Conservation Board and for Sageville down in that area where the transaction's taking place.
Yeah, sounds like there's still other requests to have a work session to discuss it, I believe. Is that correct?
Right. Is there anything else for Anthony?
Anything?
Take a brief recess?
Motion to recess until nine.
I will second.
Motion to second to recess until nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
Everyone, it's 9:00 AM. We'll call the Board of Supervisors. Durbey County back into session on Monday, excuse me, Tuesday, July 6, 2021. So going to our official agenda, the first item that we have is public comments. At this time, if anyone wishes to address the Board of Supervisors via Zoom or here in the boardroom, they may do so. By here, you can go to the podium. And if you are on Zoom, you'll need to raise your hand in the virtual world. And we'll pause a moment to see. Good morning.
Good morning.
Go to the podium, give us your name and address. And we ask that comments be limited to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Art Roach. I live at 5451 Meadow Court in Asbury. And I'm here to discuss very briefly with you the concept of bond referendum or conservation measures here in Dubuque County. Iowa law requires that bond referendum initiatives be started by a PAC, a PAC, Political Action Committee. And to that end, we have filed papers to form PAC known as Dubuque County Land and Water Legacy. That is a state of purpose of moving this bond referendum forward. I'm the chair. Sue Drabus is the treasurer. Chad Cox is the secretary. We have a number of other team members. We've been meeting weekly for the most part for several months. And we have three purposes. One was to urge the Dubuque County Conservation Board to petition the Board of Supervisors to put the Dubuque County Land and Water Legacy Bond Referendum on the ballot. And they took an action at their meeting in June to that effect. I don't know that you've received that petition yet. But when you do, we hope that you will act upon it. Our second purpose is to support your efforts, the efforts of the county Board of Supervisors, to move this forward, to lay out the specific wording of the bond referendum, and find a way to make this a possible happy outcome in the county of Dubuque. And third, our organization stands ready to help deliver a 60% or greater yes vote to approve that referendum whenever it comes on the ballot. We've been seeking endorsements from organizations related to conservation in Dubuque County and have obtained a number of those endorsements. We're requesting that the county Board of Supervisors, when it receives the petition from the county Conservation Board to determine a date and put this issue on the ballot for the people of Dubuque County to make a decision about. Why now? You recall that there was significant discussion back in 2017, which included the Assembly of a Coalition and consultation from other people involved in similar efforts around Iowa. At that time, the biggest concern was that there was not a current comprehensive parks plan in existence. And until that was done, it was not likely that we could succeed with any kind of a bond referendum. That's been accomplished now. We have a plan. There's a 280-page plan published by the county Conservation Board. And there have been similar efforts in other counties. Lynn County did this in 2016 for $40 million. They got a 74% yes vote from the citizens of Lynn County. Polk County did this for $50 million in 2012. And they're now proposing another one for $65 million in 2021. Johnson County did it in 2008 for $20 million, and they got a 61% yes vote. So this is a common and good and painless way to accomplish funding for public parks and conservation efforts in your county. And that's really all I need to say now. I think the Conservation Board report is coming up later in your work session. And I hope to be around to hear that and possibly answer questions if that comes up. So that's the extent of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Art. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Do we have anyone in the virtual world who has raised their hand? We'll go on with our agenda then. Item number one on proclamations, we do not have any today. We do have the minutes of June 28. Harley, if you've had a chance to read those, Jay was not present. Did you want to make a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And I will second that. We have a motion to second to approve the minutes of June 28. Sir, any discussion?
Nope. Thanks for carrying the water, so to speak.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, our consent items. And these would normally be done by a single motion. We do not have any today. So we are on to item number four, which is the procurement procedures. And I would welcome Jeff Miller, I think, to the podium. We have a request for a proposal. I think this is something that you wish to send out for... Well, I'll turn it over to you. Tell us what we need to know, Jeff.
Proposals for aerial photography for the spring of 2022. It was budgeted and approved through the normal budgeting process. I'm just getting ready to send out the proposal. So looking for your approval for that.
Is this the same proposal that we saw during the budget session?
I didn't have a proposal ready in the budget session, but this is...
And do you want to walk us through the high points here for the proposal?
Sure.
Dawn will advance the screen.
Actually, I would just go to the Exhibit A. Yeah, that's the... Yeah.
I just recall during the budget sessions, we were trying to decide how much we wished to spend and then what would be the clarity of the final product. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's great. I love it when people are loud. Good.
The area, we're essentially doing like a quarter-mile buffer of the county to get everything outside of that. There's a couple of areas outside where the city of Dubuque collected aerial photography in 2020 that we're going to allow them to essentially add on. We've included it as a cost in our proposal, just so that... And they understand they're going to pay for that extra portion, similar with Dyersville and Cascade. Just kind of making sure that they get, if they want extra stuff, that they can get it. The area in green there is the area that we're requesting proposal for 3-inch imagery as opposed to 6-inch resolution countywide. It covers most of the areas that we've had 3-inch imagery previously. We dropped a couple of areas off and actually added a couple of areas too around Bankston and the rest of the Highway 20 corridor. I think it covers mostly growth areas where we're going to see some divisions in the next three or four years at least, so.
And any idea what you expect that the cost of this will be? What are you anticipating?
Somewhere between, what, $67,000 and $130,000.
That obviously fits within the budget that was established.
Yeah, we budgeted, or $130,000 was budgeted.
Do my colleagues have specific questions that they wish to have him address in further detail?
This is like a three-year contract, right?
No, this will be paid, it'll be paid over two budget years.
Okay, that's what I meant, I guess.
Maybe for the layperson out there, can you tell us the benefit? Why do we need really good aerial photography at the county? What benefit is that?
Well, it certainly helps with our mapping purposes, trying to get our, when we draw new plots, make sure that they're in the right spot. Helps the assessors seeing new additional buildings that may or may not have gotten building permit. Helps law enforcement with, when they're doing warrant, serving a warrant so they can see where people can get out or where they have to surround and keep an eye on. Thank you.
I would make the motion to approve the request for proposals.
And I will second that.
Motion to second for request for proposals for fiscal year '22 digital ortho-photography. I just wanted to say that I could say that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. And next on the agenda would be public hearings, and we don't have any schedule for this meeting, nor were we presented with any plots to approve. However, number seven, the action items, is long and meaty, so we'll see where this goes. The action items can be approved. They also can be denied or tabled. So the first, we'll walk through these, is the resolution approving hiring of deputies and assistants and clerks. We have it on shared screen, the positions that we're seeking to have board approval to fill and finalize the hire.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I will second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Next is a resolution to approve a service agreement with Howard Nihart Company Actuarial Services. Is there any need for context? I know Stella is here.
I guess, what's this for? I'm not familiar with it.
Good morning, Stella.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The resolution is for services from the Howard E. Nihart Company Inc., which is an actuarial company. They do the GASB 75 update annually, so every other year we do a full report. This is our interim report year. And then the Iowa 509A. And these we do because we are partially self-insured on our health insurance plan. We're required to do these.
Just to make sure that that process is run with good fiscal responsibility?
Yes.
Are there other questions?
I don't have any. I'd make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
And I will second it.
Motion to second to approve the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is carried. Next is the, we did table this from last week, Jay. This is to approve the fiscal year '22 salaries for non-bargaining county employees. So Dawn, I don't know if you want to lead us through this?
So this is a resolution that's done at the beginning of each fiscal year. You have already voted on all of the positions that are covered through the Compensation Board. And so what is presented here also includes the non-bargaining employees, employees who are not covered under a union contract. And what you see is a proposed increase of 3% for those non-bargaining employees. And that is what was budgeted for FY '22.
That was the high number that we put in to run the budget. And I know when we did this back in those, it's hard to remember, those months ago, I was at 2.5%, and we came, I think, kind of to a consensus that we wouldn't exceed 3. So that was the number we were budgeting. So I guess that's what the, if we wish to have discussion and make a decision other than 3%, that's why we kind of waited for your input, Jay.
No, I'm comfortable with 3. Some of the other, or maybe you can explain the additional ones and where they came from?
The additional?
Well, the additional percentages, why are they different?
Oh, because those are the ones, are you talking like the deputy auditors? Is that what you're referring to?
I understand myself. I'm just, maybe for public disclosure, why are they different percentages?
Those are what you voted on during the budget process. That is from, for any elected official in any of the deputies within their department, their wages are recommended by a Compensation Board, and that was presented to you during the budget process. And so for the sheriff, I believe it was 6% increase, or 6.5% increase, I'm sorry. And then for all other elected officials, it was 5.2. Those recommendations were reduced down to 5.2. And then also for the supervisors, it was just 0.98% that you approved during the budget process.
Can you scroll to the page where we can see the numbers of deputies that are impacted by the sheriffs? You know, I voted for that percentage of increase for the sheriff and the resulting increase for elected officials. So when we look to see that significant increase that we did approve for the sheriff, 6.5%, I guess it doesn't show in this, does it?
Well, because those are, the reason that they're tied to the sheriff is because of the union contract. They're not deputies in the sense like they are in the auditor's office. That is all tied to the union contract, because their wages are a percentage of the sheriff per the union contract. So whatever the sheriff's increase is, will automatically apply to those 17 individuals in that bargaining unit.
But it's still tied to the Compensation Board?
Correct.
Right.
They are tied together.
And so then the 3% that we are, you know, this is the first time the 3% has been in public and disclosed?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we see some here that are 10%, 10.7% increases, but that's the per-hour folks, you know, doing the hourly wage at Sunny Crest. We have to get those wages right, and I guess it just shows how low we were before, really, to have people apply for those positions, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
And I will second that.
Motion to second to approve the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote, Harley? I didn't. Okay, thank you. That motion carried unanimously. The next resolution is to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Urban County Coalition. That is the lobbying firm. We join with other metro counties to have folks help us understand what's happening at the State House during the legislative time of the year. We are continuing to meet once a month during the summer months, which I don't know historically if that's happened or not, but trying to look at, I think, the horizon, anticipate what may come up, but also talking a little bit about relief plans, relief money. I don't know if you've been able to attend any of those. There's one July 23, I think.
I was on several of the UCC meetings earlier last, I don't think I was on the last couple.
And Ed's been with us all year, pretty much at those as well, so.
Yeah, I've had the chance to work with Larry, Gary, and Megan over the years. And they were actually helpful, kind of helping some of the understanding of the law changes during the pandemic. But what I would be looking for from a lobbying firm, that's what this is that we're paying, is influence and potentially to be able to sway. And it didn't happen this year, and we've had trouble having it in previous years. The information about what's going on is commonly available, and it's available through ISAC that we are a member of as well. Now, they might know a little bit more of the inside baseball or inside the Capitol, so to speak. But just having knowledge doesn't necessarily put you in a better position. It just makes you more educated. And so I'm, and I believe I did not support this in the budget as well. And so I won't be supporting this today. I think they're all good people. I just think it's time that maybe we leave the band. The music's just, it's not working in our favor. And we're probably a little different than the rest of the urban counties in there. And many times, the UCC gets labeled as, you know, Johnson County and those liberals, Democrats, trying to do this. And I don't know if that's a group we want to be with. I think they do fine things, but I think we need to be independent in Dubuque County. So I'll be voting against this.
Do you have another proposal, Jay, of what, how else we could go forward? I mean, we need the information about what's happening at the State House.
We just hired a new person as our director, interim director of something, something. Forget Mr. Drabus' official title. He's on vacation for the last 10 days, so mine's still a little foggy. But, I mean, he could certainly provide that information. We could get it from ISAC. We have other staff members and/or, I unfortunately am glued to my phone and my iPad most of the day and have readily available information. There was discussion even at the state level whether even to allow local governments to do this. So I'm not the only one thinking that maybe government shouldn't hire lobbyists to influence other governments. Nothing personally against the other members, nothing personally against, you know, Larry, Gary, and Megan, who are the primary employees of the company that we employ. They're fine people. They do a fine job. I just think it's time that we move away from this.
And I would just look out even into our gallery here today, our top executive team that's present. Stella, you've attended UCC meetings. Have you found their information to be helpful, their perspective? Have you been able to call on those folks for help? And I know that they have led us through, us being as a board member of the East Central Regional Governing Board, our multiple-million-dollar investment in brain health. They have been absolutely instrumental, critical to help us understand, and they have been very helpful in making changes to proposed laws. Things could be worse for urban counties without those folks. I know that personally with that add-on. And I don't know, you know, they've helped you, I think. You've been at most of those meetings in clarifying legislation that has then in turn been passed on our county engineers present. So our county engineer, I'm not saying, Anthony, you attend the UCC meetings, but I know that they help you through, Ed, understand what law is coming. And your feedback then goes back to the State House, you know, so your information can come back to our state representatives. So my personal conversations with those who are elected individuals at the State House is they welcome the comments from the UCC lobbyists. They look forward to their perspective, and they trust them and work with them well. So, I mean, I think that, you know, it's a two-way street. They give us information, but we're sending back information. And I find it to be incredibly invaluable to what I do as a supervisor.
Yeah, I definitely, you know, if you're newer, it's helpful. If you want to try to game the system and understand what's going on, it's helpful. But in my opinion, a lobbyist, you're trying to get results. And the results we've been getting is not good. So basically, the, you know, the commercial property tax, that's going to cost Dubuque County between the government entities $4 million a year. And they lobbied against that, and we lost. And so there's quite a few losses that happened this year and previous years related to local control and others that UCC, along with Dubuque County, lobbied against and lost.
Right.
Is $25,000 a good price for knowledge and conversation when it doesn't lead to good results? My thought is no. Those are my final comments.
And I just wanted to make sure the room understands, and the room at large, being everyone in the county. I've been a supervisor, this is my third year, so I've worked with the legislative process three times. And elimination of the backfill was on that agenda all three years. So if it's costing $4 million, which it does, that was on the agenda my first year and did not pass. It continued to give us those $4 million. The second year, same result. It was ready to be decided and wasn't. So I look at it as potentially an $8 million savings for the years that the UCC was able to help us keep that on board. So, you know, yeah, they'll admit, and they'll be here next week. I think they're scheduled to be here. But I'm emphatic, yes, that we need them. You know, Harley, if you wish to make any comment or...
Obviously, I've been here six months. I gained a lot of knowledge from the UCC, just sitting in on the meetings and listening. I had a couple of issues that I brought up to Delaware County Representative, and that all kind of got moved through, and the UCC was kind of behind me on that. I understand Jay's point. It seemed like a lot of undecided. When a bill would come up, and it's like, well, you got to take a stand, either yes or no. Everything's undecided. But I think the $25,000, at least at this point, I'd like to see another year of it. So I would make a motion to approve the resolution for the UCC.
And I will be the second. Is there anything further we wish to say?
Just an idea. If you're interested in awkward moments, we could table this until they're here next week, and they could tell the public the value of service they provide. But that's just a thought.
The motion is second. Does anyone wish to withdraw their motion or their second?
I think we could wait until next week if they're here. I kind of forgot they were going to be here. I guess, whatever you think, Ann, or...
I guess I'll question, we're acting on this. Is there a timeline? I think they've asked us for a decision. This is Lynn County that takes the laboring ore in gathering the resources, and we just pay their invoice.
Yeah, anyone selling services and products wants a decision, and a yes as soon as possible. I did that for 25 years.
Lynn County is our colleague, though. Those supervisors are certainly people I work with frequently. But I'm on the Regional Governing Board for mental health, so.
Did you withdrew your motion, correct? I just want to be clear here.
I forgot that they were here next week.
Do you wish to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion at this time.
I will make a motion to table until the UCC representatives are in front of us.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion to table the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next agenda item is to discuss... The next agenda item is to discuss, thank you, Kevin, the addendum and extension of lease for the voter annex location.
Yes, good morning. This is the extension for our annex at 75 Locust. We opted for a two-year extension. Beginning on August 1st, 2022, we will be able to have a 90-day out. So at any point, we can give 90 days notice with no penalty to vacate that lease. So this will, this will get us a good solid 12 months in that space, starting August 1st. And the increase is from 156850 per month to 1643 per month. Are there any questions?
Do you recommend our approval?
I do. Loudly, apparently, too.
I would just ask, you know, did you negotiate the lease, Kevin, and are you comfortable with it? And is this your recommendation?
It is my recommendation. I did not negotiate this lease. TFM is my previous employer. Jenny negotiated the lease on our behalf.
Okay. And you think this is critical to carrying out our duties even, what, next month? No, for November?
Absolutely, yes.
Good. So anyone who wishes to make a motion to approve the addendum?
I would make a motion to approve the extension of the lease with TFM.
And I will second that.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Kevin and Jenny, if she is out on Zoom. Next is the resolution back before us with the 28E funding agreement with the city of Dubuque. So I don't know if this is Anthony or Ed, but either or both of you should probably go to the podium on this so we have context for what's going on. We had a last-minute memo, which is why we held it for you, Jay, that things turned at the last minute with a gent, with packet items, so.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so we're back at this meeting with the 28E agreement, which would be a revision to the 28E. And this would be a request from the city of additional funds to complete sort of our fiscal responsibility into this project. All along, we've 50/50 shared with the city of Dubuque the right-of-way acquisition cost for the Southwest Arterial. And what's remaining on, for the balance to be paid to the city would be $320,221. And that's, that's what should be in the resolution there, I believe. So that's what's, what's remaining for our fiscal responsibility. I guess as far as the memo that was presented to the supervisors, city of Dubuque assistant engineer Bob Schizel put that together. I believe he is on the call and can chime in on that if you have any questions for that. I know there's some parcels that have been laid out in a map here for the board to take a look at of what's, what's remaining out there. Beyond that, I don't have a lot of information really to share beyond that.
Can we put the parcels up? I think that's important. That's the, at least my memory, the only contentious point.
Yes, we put the parcels up. I just want to make sure, Anthony, it's my understanding that all of the legal costs to the, we shared in the price of the acquisitions, but all of the legal work on the acquisitions was done by the city of Dubuque's legal department, correct?
I would agree with that. You know, the city took the lead on any negotiating legal fees that were associated with that. I know there's some, at least some condemnation through there, so they would have had to, you know, facilitate that. You know, we were strictly just a fiscal partner in this, and, you know, my office never really got involved with it beyond that.
Thank you.
I just have two questions, and I've asked these all along, and I just can't get it. We have the map now, which is good, but what is the acreage? And what is the value of that acreage, either original acquisition price? If anyone has that, that would be helpful.
While we're waiting to make that transfer here at the podium with people, can we see if Bob Schizel is present? Bring him up on Zoom and unmute him as well. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Do you know the acreage that we're talking about that's been identified, and what's the value of that, that we paid for?
Bob, this is, if I could.
If Bob can answer the question, I would be happy if he can't.
The thing that Bob has, I was just going to say that we were going to put this up on the screen. Bob can't see that.
This, this property value is here? Is this what you wanted to up, Ed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is Bob Schizel, assistant city engineer. Ed and I collaborated on preparing the, the Excel document or the chart that's shown on the screen right now. So this particular document, I've outlined the parcels that we think potentially may have some excess. We do not definitively know that yet, other than the middle interchange parcel, which is identified as parcel 133. We do know definitively that there will be some excess there. And we have given some approximations on what we think those acreages might be around the four quadrants of the middle interchange. But again, this chart, under the second column, under the total acquisition, that is the total acquisition cost. You know, that includes everything from appraisal cost to acquisition cost to legal fees, property management. I mean, that, that, those are, that is the total cost for those particular parcels, okay? And then I provided the, the total parcel area. And then I also then included what was actually acquired as part of the fee title or as part of the acquisition. So example, on the first line, it says parcel 114, there was 157 acres in total. And we've acquired 37.63 acres. And so we kind of had that, so the chart is kind of very consistent that way. And then what I've shown you is the appraised, the appraised valuation cost per acre for the various parcels. And then I broke down, if you take the total cost, which would be kind of in that column number two, I then divided the, the total cost by what we actually acquired. So I gave a, you know, a total cost per acre. So I gave what the appraisal, the appraisal valuation was, and then I provided, at the end of the day, what the total cost per acre was. And then the excess property, again, I'm showing that, you know, the middle interchange, we've approximated what those are. The other, the other locations, we do not yet know what, what that potential excess property will be. And the reason for that is we have to go through a resurvey and a replating process for the entire Southwest Arterial corridor. And during that process, we will collaborate with the Iowa DOT to determine if there is any excess and what land will be dedicated to the Iowa DOT as highway right-of-way and what may potentially be considered excess. So some of those, again, I just, we don't know yet what those are. But I did.
I'm still looking for a total. I'm still looking for a total acreage and a total value. Maybe I don't have that. I mean, I can sum those up, but this is a nice spreadsheet. Do we have that? I mean, it looks on our vested interest, it's hundreds of thousands.
Total that.
Well, the vested.
The county vested interest part, I assume that's what you're showing.
Right, so the.
That we are portioned, column J, is that?
Yep.
The dollar amount?
Yeah, so that is, that is what, so, so let's just look at parcel 114. So the 1, 1.6, 1.682 million. The county's portion of that was 167,881. That's how much you contributed.
So do we feel that they just did a sum? Bob, do you, it's 330,603. I don't know if you can see that on Zoom, but that's a sum that's in front of us. Is that what you would consider an accurate, as it's titled, county's vested interest?
Can you say that one more time, Jay?
Column J, we just sum column J, those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5 numbers with, on the five parcels, I guess, there's a bunch of 133s, for a total of 330,603. Is that the value?
Yes, that would be the.
Okay.
That would be this county's contribution for parcels, combined parcels, 114, 133, 150B, 169, and 170. You are correct.
Thank you. So what, where I'm at at this point, you know, it's like if you, you know, if you went into business with your brother on a farm, and you split everything 50/50, and then you plant crops and develop stuff, and there were some areas that were on the side. And then if I said, well, I'm just going to basically put those and title them in my name, and I'll own them. Sounds fair? I think most brothers would go, no, why don't we split those as well? Or you, if you want them, compensate us for them. That's my, Amy's point. I just don't understand why the county would just, you know, say, city, sure, you can have it, even though the county as a government, and there is overlap in the taxation, I understand that, we would just say, city, they're yours. If there are services that Dubuque County owes, we're fined to pay for them. We pay all our bills. But that was never part of the agreement, and nor was this. And so I will be voting no on this. Asked my colleagues to do the same on behalf of Dubuque County, who we represent, which includes 21 cities, not just the city of Dubuque.
Bob, this is Ann McDonough. When did the Southwest Arterial acquisitions and the city's first expenditures and first costs for the Southwest Arterial, when did that begin? Do you know?
Yes, our first acquisition occurred in 2009.
And had the city spent any resources prior to 2009 that you know of getting ready for the Southwest Arterial?
Yes, there was, you know, prior to, prior to beginning the property acquisition phase, we had to go through the preliminary design phase for the corridor, where we selected the alignment of the Southwest Arterial so that we could identify property impacts. So that was done, plus all the, the environmental, all the environmental study work that was done. So the, the original environmental documents, the environmental work, the preliminary design, et cetera, et cetera, those efforts all started approximately, I want to say about, about 2004? 2003-ish, somewhere in there?
So nearly 20 years ago?
So, yeah, there's quite a bit of work done before we ever had to, before we were able to begin the property acquisition phase.
And is this the final document that concludes the agreement between the city and the county on Southwest Arterial?
Yes, this would be it. This would be final.
And the total dollar amount that, that we should be paying to the county, from the county to the city at this time? Anthony, you may know that. Is in the resolution?
That's correct. You know, the recommendation that comes from the city is to pay out $320,221 for our remaining fiscal responsibility.
It roughly would be the, what's the whole total? Our contribution was over 3.7 million, some in that neighborhood?
So far, it's, it's been $3,576,457.
So put us closer to that 3.7, 3.8 number.
Right.
So significant investment by Dubuque County. You understand they did the cost in this. We did the same thing with the 911 system, and the county paid for all of it. City didn't pay for any of it. So if you're going to go that route, they owe us a lot.
Well, the route, I guess I'm saying is that, you know, these decisions are made by supervisors long gone.
No, this is in front of us.
The agreements and how things are titled, and, and my understanding, not from folks in this meeting today, but from my three-year term on the Board of Supervisors, is that we did, we paid what we were asked to pay, and we left the laboring ore to the city. And now is the final number to kind of square up. And so when you go back to your brother's conversation, and if one brother's been the property manager for the entire enterprise for 20-some years, and it comes to the final squaring up, and you see 10% vested interest versus 90% vested interest, you'd expect that brother to pay up and close the books, right? So that's my answer to my six brothers, that you square up and you move on, you try to work together on the next partnership. So that's the reason I am going to support this. But it's time to get, bring this to conclusion. I don't have a better way. They've done a fantastic job.
Better ways to split the value. I mean, fair, 50/50. I just, you know, and once again, if you're going to use that property management thing, we did the whole 911 system. Where was the city on that? I just don't understand why we, representing all 97,000 constituents, unincorporated, and the other 20 cities, continue to have very, very favorable agreements with the wonderful city of Dubuque, which, I love the city of Dubuque. I just wish the agreements were a little more fair and equitable.
My understanding, Bob, is that if any of the parcels are sold, that money goes into, like, a trust for future projects, right?
Harley, that, that is, that is one option, obviously. I think we outlined in the agreement that, depending on, you know, if and when. I'd like to take a step back. So for parcel 114, 150B, 169, and 170, I really don't think that there is much value in those. If by chance they do become remnant parcels, you know, they are, they're, they're large embankments. There's really no developable opportunity. The development of those particular pieces are extremely unlikely, in my opinion. If you were to go out there and you were to look at those, those areas that may become excess, there, there is really no value to those. I mean, we won't, they're non-developable. Now, parcel 150B, it's, it's landlocked. I don't know, I'm not sure what would ever happen to that. But if it, you know, if it were to, you know, say, potentially be sold someday, you know, say, when a road network would be developed or something like that, then the options would be whatever, whatever those costs would be, the county would be, you know, would be, you know, reimbursed for their expenditure. Or another option that, that the federal government allows us is, is both the city and the county would, would take whatever, you know, any money that would be generated, say, from the disposal of an excess piece. And the city and the county could then take that money and reinvest it into another public transportation purpose.
Okay, that's, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, so we, we have some options. Yeah, so we, we have some options, I just tried to lay out those, what options, you know, could be before us at, at some future date.
But those will all be Dubuque, city of Dubuque will make those decisions. By this agreement, the county will have no standing to make those decisions. It will be the city of Dubuque to make the decisions whether they wanna put that into a road, or whether they wanna use it as a development agreement with a, a private developer. You'd have both those options. That's the way I read the agreement, at least. So, there's no guarantee it will go back into another public road. And the reason the city wants that is because they probably wanna develop that area, which would make sense, because it's a beautiful highway, and usually you get development along beautiful highways. And all of those I'm in favor of, I just don't, not in favor of just saying, sure, take it, it's yours, when two different governments with two different taxations, two different elected officials, making those decisions. If it was fifty fifty all along, it should be fifty fifty when we get out.
I don't see anything there showing fifty fifty.
Maybe Anthony or somebody can explain, if he's, his term fifty fifty, if you wanna explain that, Anthony? And is that a fair assessment, fifty fifty, it's ten, ten?
The county's vested interest is ten percent on parcel one fourteen.
Well, that's, he's splitting parts of the house.
I don't know how you get to fifty fifty. And, and on one fifty B, apparently that's maybe the one where there might be opportunity, that's nine point nine seven percent.
The city created this spreadsheet, so it's
With, with our staff person, and you've not allowed him to speak, and, 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 and just doing the work.
He said fifty fifty, so I was using his word, it's ten percent, ten percent, which, that was our share, eighty percent came from the federal government. That's my understanding, Anthony?
Yes, well, the funding sources are, are laid out this way, it was, um, funded by eighty percent federal funds through the Safety Lou, uh, Funding Act, um, and then the city and the county each picked up ten percent each, uh, to, to complete the hundred percent funding, uh, source for this project. Um, and then the, you know, the city and county basically fi- uh, split fifty fifty on the right-of-way acquisition cost. Um, and that's, that's where, where Bob is leading to the, now that, uh, you know, we're coming up to the sort of finish line on these costs. Um, and what we've spent so far is three million, five hundred and seventy six thousand, four hundred and fifty seven dollars, um, per the twenty eighty agreement, the original. And then we had amendment number one, which was, you know, I can't remember, you know, maybe a year or two ago, that was eighty nine thousand, four dollars. And, um, and now we're here today talking about amendment number two of three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty one dollars.
The city's asking us to reimburse them that, to come up to the fifty fifty share of the, of the local match, right? We are not square with them yet on our, our previous agreements.
They have a, they, they expended all the funds, and then we've been reimbursing them all along.
I have no problem with that, I have no problem with the money, okay? It's about the parcels. We paid for half the parcels. Dubuque County residents elected us to spend the money wisely, and we did that, and this is a great project. And we spent, we went halvesies with city of Dubuque on this, and thank you for the federal government. Now, at the end, they're like, well, we wanna keep these other ones, because they're valuable, and not give you anything. And I just don't think that's fair. Um, but I love the Southwest Arterial, I love the partnership, it's wonderful until this agreement. I think we should pay, obviously, everything, the cost for Southwest Arterial, but we shouldn't allow excess land with a value of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, just to go to one other government entity. We represent Balltown, we represent unincorporated areas, we represent Dyersville. And if we always behave like that, I think you're shortchanging our other citizens, that's my opinion.
Jay, we are, we are fulfilling a previous agreement.
Oh, that's why this is a new agreement, Ann, it's right in front, this is a new agreement.
It's a new agreement because
This was never in any agreements, this was never in any agreements that the city was gonna get all these, the, the land acquisition, and they were gonna keep it, that was never in agreement.
It was always titled in their name, I can't tell you what's happened over the last twenty years, but I find it hard to sit here today and say that they've done it all wrong, they've made the program happen. They're asking us to be square, to pay what's due, and I don't see anybody saying that it's not our responsibility to come to terms with that. You wish to have, you wish to have some interest in telling the city what to do with land that was titled in their name by the requirement of the Iowa DOT. And I find that as an attorney, you don't get into those conversations, you weren't in them when the time it was titled. It, so there's, we don't have a legal interest in that property. Previous boards of supervisors should have insisted we were titled in some of that land, and we were not. So, now I think it's time to be square with our partner and pay our share to close up this, that's where I am.
If you were running for city council, that would be a good speech, but as a supervisor, I think it's misplaced.
We are our number one partner, and if Dyersville were here, or Luxembourg, they'd be absolutely with me. I'm not arguing that one citizen deserves more than another. We've entered into a multiple million dollar partnership over a project that's been hard at work for twenty years, and I think that this is unbecoming to us, to try to hold this up.
It never included the excess parcels going to the city of Dubuque, that was never in any writing, never in any agreement.
And I guess that's what happens when you transfer legal title. That's maybe what you're not understanding, when the legal title is transferred, there's nothing in those deeds saying, oh, but we wanna have, we're at the table, we're a silent partner, the land is transferred by the DOT to ownership. And then it's a little hard later to say, yeah, but I own some of that, well, you're not on the deed.
Well, you're a lawyer, that's why they have courts, because there's people that disagree.
Are you saying this should go to court?
I'm, I'm just saying we should, we are elected to protect Dubuque County's interest. And, you know, there is a crossover, obviously, the city has fifty eight thousand people in that neighborhood, and obviously are clearly the, the, the largest economic engine and tax engine for Dubuque County, I don't disagree with that. Southwest Arterial's a wonderful project, and I also think we should pay every dollar fifty fifty on this. But I don't believe we should allow another government entity just to take the leftovers that are worth three hundred and thirty thousand. Those are my final comments.
So, Jay, this is Bob.
Well, I think the value of the sections is obviously debatable, because some of them obviously are not, uh, going to be developable. Uh, some of the other ones, there is a possibility. I, I believe in the agreement that the city had agreed to keep the county appraised of, apprised of any upcoming transactions on it. Personally, I feel if we owe them the money, we need to straighten up. Anthony, what is your opinion on this?
I mean, my recommendation is, you know, we, we do owe this, um, re- you know, responsibility to, 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 so like you said, square this up. Um, this is, uh, something that's been on my books for this year, and I, now we're into a new fiscal year, so I wanna make sure that this is, this is paid out, and, you know, we're done with our responsibility in this. So, um, my recommendation would be to, to pay this and just be done with this.
Okay, I trust your leadership in the county roads division. I will make a motion to approve the resolution to settle up the debt with the city in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty one dollars, is that what it was?
I'll leave a second to the resolution. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, sign nay.
Nay.
Thank you, motion carries two to one. Thank you, gentlemen, for your efforts. Bob, thank you for attending, appreciate your discussion.
Thank you, everybody, have a great day.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Next is the resolution to approve documents with Martin equipment for the purchase of a, a drum roller. Any need for discussion there? I was looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Next, resolution to approve temporary delayed travel restrictions, um, all, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the temporary, uh, travel restrictions for the Bella Red Rock Thrasher's tractor ride.
Ann, I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next is temporary delayed travel restrictions, uh, for Cheryl Fest Parade, September eleventh, motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Next, resolution to approve, uh, delayed travel restrictions for, um, a side-by-side UTV benefit ride, August twenty first, two thousand twenty one.
I'll make the motion to approve the temporary travel restrictions for the UTV ride for the, for the, for a special Olympics benefit.
Ann, I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Our final resolution in the action items, uh, concerns a general assistance application. We do have a work session scheduled later in the day, um, it would be, um, I'll make a motion to table.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion about tabling? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries, we table for later this morning. Next, our communications that the board has received, will receive and file without taking action. Um, I would, I, I just would make note, we do have a lengthy, um, letter from, letter from our auditor, now on the shared screen, um, so, I understand we will look for a motion to receive and file, but I also would like some comment, when, when do we wish to bring this up? You raised some critical things here, and I wanna, I just don't wanna do our typical receive and file, this, this one's not going to the folder. What do you want us to do?
Well, read, digest, uh, these are questions and answers that were submitted to the auditor of state throughout the state, from different jurisdictions, so not just, these aren't our questions. Um, but there's a lot of good information in here, and I think it starts to lay out the framework for our future grants programs. Um, so, fully read through it, we can pick a week in the coming month or so, where we have a, a light load, if that's even a thing, and we can set up, you know, forty-five minutes or so to talk about, and, and really start to come up with the structure on how we wanna move forward.
So, okay, because we are certainly getting calls from those
Absolutely.
Many applicants that applied back in December, and are looking for some clarity for their budgets of what they should be doing now that they're in there in New York, too.
You should be able to offer a fair amount of clarity, we just need to sort of get our ducks in a row on our end.
Okay, so, something coming, do we have a, just throw me a, some kind of outer date to check back on?
Uh, I can work with Dawn to figure out a date in the next two or three weeks that would work best with our work session schedule.
So, maybe in August, or, excuse me, July or early August, we'll have something?
August, yes.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
And then the next is, uh, we can take them separately, or you can do them as, uh, let's do this one at a time.
I guess, what do we wanna do at the first, and we're just gonna table it then, for the?
What, I, I think we should probably receive and file the documents, so it's officially in our record, that would be my thought.
I would agree.
I'll make the motion to receive and file.
I will second that.
Motion is second to receive and file the auditor's letter, um, regarding the grant program, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. And then the next, um, item is the sheriff's note, who his compensation board, a representative is. It continues to be, um, previous sheriff Ken Rundy.
Make the motion to receive and file.
Is it receiving fileers to approve, or, I, receive file, okay, yeah, I will second that.
Motion is second to receive and file, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. The last item is the city of Cascades, uh, addition to their urban renewal area. Letting us know, I guess, the status of, of their, um, urban renewal area, and there probably relates to some tiffs they may be doing, I don't know.
Yeah, make the motion to receive and file.
Ann, I will second that.
Motion is second to receive and file, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Next, on the appointments, we have on our list of vacancies that have been updated, if anyone interested in comment or conversation. Hearing nothing, moving on, personnel requisitions, we have none, we also have no additional tabled and pending items from previous meetings. At this time, we'll conclude our formal meeting with another opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to address the board about matters of which are concerned, they may do so at this time. If you're in the room, you can go to the podium, if you're in the virtual world, please raise your hand or enter a comment in chat, so we know you wish to speak, we'll wait a moment to see. There's no rush to the podium in the room, do we have anyone virtually indicating any interest? Very good. Um, so, we, um, have, have concluded our formal meeting, it is just past ten, do we wish to take a short, uh, break for?
I think a motion to recess till ten oh five.
I will second.
Motion is second to recess till ten oh five, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries, we'll be back, ten oh five for the COVID update, thank you, everyone. Thank you. And we're prepared for the COVID update. I don't think we have anyone personally in the room who's going to address that, so we'll see who's with us on Zoom. Patrice, are you here?
Yes, I am. And I believe Samantha's.
Good morning.
Good morning. And I believe Samantha is here and Tom as well. I don't know if Stacy made it yet or not.
We have Mary Rose, we just have Diane Freiberger. We've got good folks here interested in what you have to say about our COVID, our COVID status.
Actually, I'm probably just going to open it up to questions. We did send you out our Friday update and per your directive, we did submit two different types of proposals for an incentive program. We'll be sharing that also with the Board of Health tomorrow evening. Our numbers of our vaccinations continue to increase with our 65 and older population. I believe we reported it, it was at 90% and it has even climbed over the weekend. I don't know if we're quite at 92% as of yet, but our numbers have increased. So I guess we'll just open it up to any questions or any concerns that you have and we'll address those.
We have to get you to the right volume level. You're whispering, Patrice. We've got air blowing all over the place in this room and it's a whisper situation, so.
Okay.
We're working on that.
Okay, sorry. That's probably a blessing for you though, huh? No, I'm kidding.
No, no. I have a question for you, Patrice, and to my colleagues as well. You have been sending articles from Hendrick Schultz. Dr. Hendrick Schultz has been submitting, and are those going to my peers or just to myself as the liaison to the health board?
Just to you as liaison to the health board. I can gladly send those as soon as we finish and I can briefly touch on those if you wish me, if you would like me to. We, in our Friday update, had mentioned what, in our incentive vaccine proposal, that with Ohio State, they did see an increase of 28% with the vaccination rate. And that was only state. We don't know how that came out, if they have colonies or sections of the state of Ohio or not. Well, Dr. Hendrick Schultz found an article on his medical, in one of his medical journals that was hot off the press that he did send, and that was the one that I did share with the Board of Health and you Chair McDonough, with the Ohio State research. They did find that it really didn't have, Ohio State incentive program really did not have an impact in the increase for the vaccinations with that adult population. And that's why I wanted to send that out to the Board of Health so that they would have time to read that for tomorrow night's Board of Health meeting. And I did include you, but Chair, or Supervisor Wickham and Supervisor Potoff, I will be glad to send you those articles as soon as I.
And I think there's a total of three now and I'm not suggesting anyone saying it's a home run, but it's three different views from medical journals talking about moving the needle at some point. I think you'd find them interesting. I would ask that you share them with my colleagues so they have the same articles that Hendrick has been sharing with, with the Board of Health.
I will do that and I'll do that moving forward as well.
Right. And then yesterday I'd written a note to you just asking if you would reach out to Polk County through their Board of Health to see. They, I thought I saw headlines, but they had started drawing winners of their lottery and would like to see if they've got any initial conclusions about increase in vaccination rates, short-term, long-term. It's all underway with brief period of time, but it would be good to see that. And also Charlie Hardig from Hardig Drug was, has been a true partner in all the things we've been doing with COVID vaccination clinics through private partnerships with, with private firms, pharmacies. And he had some good information and insight and I'm hoping you can reach him and if he, if he's available, maybe he could also be there with the Board of Health to just be in discussion.
Yes, and I can share that Samantha and I have been in contact with Polk County Health Department and we're planning on sharing that tomorrow evening at the Board of Health, but I can give you just a quick summary of what they have shared with us, is that they had said that they did see their vaccine numbers increase, but not what they wanted them to increase to. They said it's been a slow increase and they did not put out any additional vaccine event sites because they said on basically every corner, there is a drugstore or a Walmart or a Target that people can walk into and have a vaccination at any time that they wish to do it. Their last drawing will be at the state fair, the last Sunday of the state fair, but they did say that they're only seeing us, at this point of the game, they're only seeing a small increase and it has not been as quickly of an increase as that they were hoping to at this part of the game. So, and we'll share that tomorrow evening with the Board of Health as well.
Right. So the question I would have for Polk isn't just how much vaccines increased by, but how much did they spend on marketing? I'd like to know what their marketing plan is to get out the information. You know, I mean, if you, if you do something and it's a big secret, you can expect there to be no increase, right? If you do something and you don't market it at all, maybe any, any increase, small or otherwise, is success. So that would be helpful to know. How, did they market?
Absolutely. We'll follow up on that because no, that was not part of our conversation that Sam and I did have with them. We do know that they did turn the lottery system over to an auditing company and I, we did not ask who the auditing company was. So we can ask more specific questions to them regarding the marketing. We'll be glad to do that.
And then maybe a last question to them is that what would they do differently? You know?
Sure.
You know, what would they wish for? I mean, we know that Mercy One's working on a mobile, a mobile clinic that's going to do vaccinations. And so, you know, what would, what would Polk County wish, if they had a wish list of, you know, you can't just magically make it happen, we're into the hard work stage of pulling every one of these vaccines in, so anything like that might be helpful.
Sure, we'll be glad to ask.
Other questions from my peers?
I do have one. Well, first comment, Patrice, thank you and the Instant Management Team for putting this proposal together. I appreciate the work you've done and the thought on it. The one question I have is, did you discuss who would pay or who would run the program, both of those things? So both the city of Deview and Deview County have tens of millions of dollars, but I'm just, that would be one, one area I wasn't sure on and who would be, one, administering the program and then, two, how the budget would play out between the city and the county.
I know, we did not get into those details. We're going to be, if this, if an incentive proposal is approved by the Board of Health or Board of Supervisors or whichever entity, we'll rely heavily on Kevin for his experience in all of this because we have never done a program like this. So it's massive in our eyes. So we're, the Instant Management Team is not the expertise in any of this, so. And I know Kevin has already looked at some of those details as well, but we would turn that over to the experts on that. So no, we have not, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrice.
Patrice, actually, Kevin is standing at the podium. Is there anything you want to state, Auditor Dragato?
Jay, to answer your point, we actually have a Q and A session with Ida Bailey scheduled tomorrow afternoon to sort of go over the who's, what's, where, wins and whys of running this program. The intent of our office is to, if, if the board so chooses to run this program to the highest level that we can, but also to, to have the auditing firm handle the bulk of all the data collection and all the processing. We don't want to, we're going to keep it out of our hands.
I appreciate that. My question was more on the, the city and the county. So the Instant Management Team is made of both city and county and that's where this proposal came from. Our Board of Health is, is obviously a county entity. The city has funds, the county has funds. I was just wondering if we had, had that discussion, if we move forward. It may be a moot point if it's not approved.
I would imagine the board approves it and it would be a county initiative, not, not coinciding with the city. Correct.
Well, can we ask Polk? How have they done it? I mean, they're sitting right there with the city of Devine.
And we can also ask Ida Bailey if they've done, if they're currently conducting any of these other incentive programs. They are familiar with these, they have been doing programs like this for, for years. So there's some expertise there. We'll get those answers tomorrow afternoon.
Nothing further from me.
Nothing from me.
Patrice, the question I have is, is the state of Iowa, they continue to change the website and they continue to change reporting out time, correct?
Correct, yes. And it sounds as though they're going to be completely fading off that COVID website. Sam, do you recall what their tentative date is that they have shared with us? It's like within, I want to say the next month or so, but Anne, we, or Chair McDonough, we can follow up with those dates and put that in the Friday update.
Do you know anything about what's happened at the veterans' home? There's, I've seen some reports over the weekend. Do you have any information about that?
No additional information than what was in the paper.
So you don't know more than what, that was reported, that they had vaccinated veterans who died of COVID?
Correct, yes. No, I do not.
Randy, Renescent's in the room here too. Randy, any information you can help us get about that?
I don't think so.
It's a variant that the state of Iowa is not concerned about, but it's infected veterans who are fully vaccinated.
Right.
Okay.
From the Iowa department.
So when you receive something like that, I'm seeing there, Randy, if you could maybe share that even with Patrice, just so we have the best flow of information for our own local response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for Patrice?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Patrice. Greatly appreciated.
Thanks.
Thank you, Patrice.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Our next work session is with our staff folks that are present to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act, our funding and where we are in that process.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Stella.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stella.
This is Second and I'll share my screen. I'm logged in.
Any chance we can turn on the air and you can talk loud?
I will do my very best. I'll, I'll project.
Okay, we got one commitment. How about the other one? Just a little bit. I mean, I think it's working its way to 80 degrees if we do nothing.
We might want to look into different units for this room.
Probably, yeah. We talked about that for the whole courthouse, yeah.
Okay, I will speak loudly.
In the mood.
So the last time we met, the board approved our internal application for the American Rescue Plan Act fund, so that's been distributed to our internal staff. I've started getting some questions on that. One of the things I've gotten questions on are certain departments, are they eligible? For example, the city and county assessor, they do have separate boards and their own levies. Also, the Sunny Crest Board of Trustees. So I'd like your thoughts as a board on how you feel about applications from those parties as an internal application versus an external application?
I think they're part of the team, aren't they? County team?
I don't know if it makes much difference, does it? In the end, I'm trying to think of, you know, certainly applications will be, be a little bit different, but the proposals and the dollar amounts will be there, the scope of the projects will be there and the benefits will be there. So I'm, I'm open, I would say. It's your discretion.
Okay. So I will communicate to those parties that they would complete the internal application if they had a proposal that they wanted to bring forward. We also had looked at the external application and so I've put that up on the screen and highlighted some things in red that I've added or changed. So one of the things that we discussed at length was that applications must be completed in full to be considered for funding, so I just put that statement in there at the beginning. One of the other things I wanted to discuss on this application is, do we want to include all of the items that are technically eligible for funding in this external application? So in, in particular, the lost public sector revenue, I don't think it makes sense to include that in the external application because it doesn't really apply to anybody except for us. And then the premium pay for essential workers. I know there was some comment, or some discussion at the board level of, do we want to include this at all? So just want your thoughts if you want those out for the public application.
Not in the public.
What's your thoughts on it? What's your proposal? I, you know, I could see there, I mean, obviously this is not the entire law, so there is.
Right.
You know, what we chose to add.
So these are the, the five eligible items pulled out from the law. So at the highest level, these are the things that can be done with the funding.
Kind of twofold. So my comment would be quickly, the public sector one, certainly for external, probably take that out, but the essential workers, could that be in both, that potentially?
It could be. You can use it for third parties as well. It does not have to be only government employees.
It's probably if the board wants to tip our hat, if we, we think we are interested in looking at those ideas, you keep it in. If you think you wouldn't approve those in the end, you probably wouldn't want to put them in there. The, the premium pay is pretty, it's a tough one. It's a touchy one.
Right, I would agree with that. I don't know that you want to, that's going to get into a tangled web that I don't think you really want to get into.
I'm not, I'm not heavily leaning either way, so I mean, I'm, I'm open, but.
So I drafted, we drafted the internal application to include all eligible items, trying to allow for people to bring forward any proposal that they felt like they wanted to bring forward that is eligible for funding. So ultimately, it will fall to the Board of Supervisors to determine, you know, what you want to fund, but it is in fact an eligible use.
I guess I'm kind of the same on this that I've been before, which is, there could potentially be something that we don't know, we don't see, and we just haven't, hasn't come to the front. So including it allows somebody to bring forward that idea. Maybe there's people that haven't been compensated who should have been, even in, you know, I mean, maybe that is, this is their only chance at that. So I don't think we should foreclose it by saying it's not part of what could be. I, I don't know who wouldn't have been covered somehow, but I also know I'm certainly not aware of all the damage that's happened from COVID.
I mean, I, I don't think we've provided any premium pay for any county employees yet, have we?
No.
Or none.
No.
So there has been that, in the private sector, but we haven't done that as an employer.
Well, they did some at Sunny Crest when the overtime rate was doubled, so that's kind of a premium pay, but, I mean, it's lack of staffing, but, I mean.
I guess I'm wondering if it wouldn't be some, if there's not, you know, minority-owned businesses that may be. I guess I'm wondering if it wouldn't be some, if there's not, you know, minority owned businesses that maybe weren't eligible or didn't have relationships to get some of the other benefits?
Other benefits?
That's all I'm saying. I mean, you're, we're just assuming that it all worked well for everybody and maybe that's not the case.
Well, if you're referring to programs like the PPP program, the, you know, Restaurant Revitalization Program, all those, I worked with the SBA on that. And yes, not everybody got those. A lot of businesses did, but there wasn't funding for all of them. But I don't, my, my gut would be that's going to be difficult for us to backfill what the federal government didn't do, our pockets. While this is a good sum of money, I don't even know if they're that deep even related to Dubuque County. And that's why it makes tough. I mean, so there's so many essential workers that, you know, really, you know, went above and beyond during this period. You know, I was fortunate to most of the time work at home. With the one time when we did the election results for four hours in this room and I didn't. And those memories weren't very good. Um, but, uh... My, my gut called me to keep it in. Keep it in and we'll, we'll review applications and have to be the bearer of bad news if, if the board doesn't want to go that way. But kind of leaning towards your side, you at least see maybe what the exposure was and what's the case. Um, but know that it's a hard case because we don't have enough money for everyone.
Yeah, I'd agree. Leave it in.
Okay, great. I will keep that item in. Um, just moving down the application, I did add a couple of additional questions, um, based on some other discussion with the, uh, the group. Making sure that this proposal has been approved by an external board of directors if they do exist. Um, so the organization is fully aware of what, uh, they're proposing. And also adding in what would happen if they didn't receive 100% of the funding request? So can that project move forward? You know, is it a non-starter for them if it, it's 100% or nothing, or if it can be scaled?
Good idea.
And I believe that's really all, um, oh no, excuse me. Question six, does your organization obtain an annual audited financial statement? So one of the things that we learned, um, now that the, some more guidance has come down on the compliance and reporting from the Treasury, is that any third party we, uh, would give $50,000 or more to becomes an official sub-recipient under federal guidelines, which comes with a lot of reporting. So, uh, we just need to be well aware of what we're doing. We need to document, um, risk with that organization. It would be good for them to have audited financial statements, um, knowing that. I don't know that it's necessarily a, a requirement for federal grants, sub-recipient, but it comes with a lot more than just passing it down.
Do, do we, we request their financial statements or what they're doing? This is the audited.
Yeah.
Um, are you interested if they have, that was reviewed as well?
Yes.
Maybe you could change that to audited or reviewed, um...
Good point.
And it's, it's, so the 50,000, is that a hard stop, hard requirement?
Stop in the guidance, yes.
Okay.
What do you mean by hard stop, Stella?
Um, the guidance says anything above $50,000 becomes a sub-recipient. So in other federal grant making, it, I don't know that there's necessarily a hard dollar stop on all of it. Each federal grant obviously is very different. Um, so...
You're saying though, anything over 50,000, they have to have audited financials or re-reviewed, or what, what's?
I'm saying that anything over 50,000 becomes an official sub-recipient under federal guidelines.
And do those guidelines require that?
Not necessarily, but it requires more on our part.
That's fine.
Yeah.
They gave enough money for me to figure it out?
Yes.
So, all right. So I think that's a good ad. If, if they have them, you'd most likely want to
Absolutely.
Those and review those, but...
What's the introductory paragraph look like? How are we introducing this to people? I mean, I'm not interested, I'm not interested in seeing small project ideas, $3,500, um, $6,500. I'm, I'm not. I, I, that, that's just a lot of no.
I hear you. I would just be confused. Five minutes ago, you said you wanted to hear all the ideas and you might do something we missed, so that, it's hard to get both of those.
Right. But I, is there anything that's saying that, you know, we're interested in ideas that have significance?
Um, would you ask the question, uh, how does this make long-lasting change for Dubuque County? So I think we're asking them to define, but we're not putting a threshold on a minimum type project.
Because that might be a good idea or else everything just goes up. You know, we're still a relatively small county, you know, so we're not, we're not Lake County, we're not, uh, Maricopa, we're not Dade County. So I think we're, we're, we're not going to get that many proposals. And I think we do have the timeframe to review a lot. So my vantage point is I wouldn't put a minimum on there, but it's certainly, if you, you know, describe it as best you can, that they should be meaningful, they should be impactful, they should, you know, have significant benefits to the community related to the funding eligibility. Those are good adjectives. I'd be in support of those.
Right. And, and things that say there needs to be a strategic and significant public purpose? Like, let's go right down to what the auditor is leading us around about, you know? That it's, these are dollars for, you know, it, it's, just isn't it an application for people just filling out applications, looking for everything?
Okay.
Do we have clearly identified that has to be Dubuque County? Because that's something, I'm just speaking in philanthropy. It's like we represent these counties and it's like, yeah, you're national and you have, you know, you, you have international employees, you know, they're just, somebody's just filling out everything. Which is fine, but you're not going to meet the criteria and it should be, you know, proceed with, I guess it's your own time wasted. But stuff like that, I'm hoping somebody just screens that out.
So, um, we do ask the population that would be served by the proposal, but I don't know that we specifically say you must be located in Dubuque County. So if that is something the board would like, um, we certainly can add that.
I guess I assume that, but I know you asked the question. I'm trying to think of other examples. I mean, we do share, this is federal money and Illinois and Wisconsin are, are friendly neighbors that buy stuff here and work here. I know some very good ones that do that. Stella lives in East Dubuque. Um, so...
But they have their rescue plan.
Yeah, they do, they do.
This is only, I think there should be Dubuque County focused exclusively.
That's what I was assuming from day one, just no one ever asked me the question. Um, I think that's the easiest.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Everybody, every other county has their money too, so it should be.
Sounds good. Dubuque County.
You know, we get applications that say, you know, we are, we're located in Wisconsin, but all of this money will be spent in Dubuque County. Like that, we typically just don't fund that. You know, it, it needs to be located here, dollars spent here, or in the service area. But when you say, oh, it's going to be, you know, it's a public purpose idea, again, that it has to be Dubuque County recipients. I, I think employees, all of that needs to be Dubuque County.
So would you like it to be headquartered? It needs to be headquartered in Dubuque County? Does it need to be a project?
I think there at least has to be an office in Dubuque County where it can be somewhat tracked.
Count it in terms of public purpose, to meet the public per, the greater public purpose of these grant dollars which are given to Dubuque County for Dubuque County citizens. We find that it must be administered here, located here, affecting citizens who live here, you know?
I think that's fair enough. I'd agree with that language.
Okay, so I will, um, rework that intro paragraph to include some more language and some of that, um, information that it should be administered, located in Dubuque County, um, and bring that back to you. Um, also remove, uh, the eligible expense for public sector, if that doesn't make much sense. Are there any other things you're looking for, items you're looking for in the external application?
Do we want to know anything about administrative fees versus dollars expended for direct purpose?
If you have the budget worksheet, that would be, you have, I was going to bring that up. Maybe we could look at that.
We don't have, um, a format, but we're asking for a detailed budget, um, with description of what each item is.
So it could come in various formats, actually a worksheet or possibly just a outline. Yeah, if you want to do that, now that the financial information are number one, that's where you kind of either list those. Just, you know, like in, in many government RFPs, sometimes they'll actually put a worksheet. You got to put this into the box, you know? And don't get your numbers or words outside or inside the box. Make sure they're the one or the other.
I'd like to see something, say about that, you know, what is, what purpose, what percentage of the money is going to be spent on administrative fees? I'd like to see people kind of explain that.
Yeah. It would be administrative and management or just administrative, whatever the common language is? You know, the budget, you could go into more detail in the budget. If you want, just to give them help, please identify, you know, capital expenses versus personnel, versus administration, versus, you know, travel, other expenses. Do we put on the application at all, or is it in the cover letter about just the dollar amounts that Dubuque County received? Do we ever list that?
We don't, uh, but that would work well in the introductory paragraph if you would like to do that.
It's public information and knowledge. It kind of sets the stage. So if anyone's ever approached the county before with projects, um, it'd give them some idea that this is a big deal. Otherwise, do you feel like this is good and ready to go after this? That's kind of the stage you're at?
I feel like yes. Um, we would like to coincide all of the applications, uh, coming in at the same time. So the timeline that we had established was that all applications, internal and external, would be due by the end of August. So, um, it's still at this point, um, beginning of July, I think we want to give parties at least 30 days minimum. 30 to 45 days, I think would be acceptable to allow for application, to allow people to fully develop, um, their ideas.
I had a call last week and the question was, do you expect us to have a complete budget? I said, yeah, I do actually. I do expect to have a complete budget. Well, we, we wouldn't know that. When would we need that? Well, by the end of August. Well, we wouldn't know that. Well, you know what? Then you don't have an application. I, I mean, I don't know what to say about that. I, I can't give them money and then be like, well, and then you're going to go figure out your budget. I'm not interested in any more of that, are we, Anne?
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. Proposed means, you know, the future. This is what we think we're going to do. Yeah, proposed, so it's not, it's not actual, it hasn't occurred, um, but what's your idea? What's your proposal? So I think if we can continue to reinforce that and if they're unable to get that far in the application, then yes, I think those would be challenging ones to award.
I think I, I would also like to know, um, how you would like this publicized or distributed? I think what we'll do is, um, I think we'll have the ability to put it on our website as a syllable type document. But how would you like it to go out to the public?
I would like to have there be a mission statement. Could we do some kind of statement that says the purpose and the why and, uh, something that sounds lofty? That, you know, the reason why it's even being done. Could we do that? To give ourselves some kind of an opening paragraph? I mean, you've been meeting about this, um, for months and there's a lot of time in this. Do you have a, kind of a mission statement that could be the reason? If you, you know, if this is a kind of a program where you wish to do, click here to go to the application. But I think that's the press release, is the mission statement.
I agree, and I think that should come from the Board of Supervisors. So I think that's what I was saying originally, that we, we need to set the high-level goals and the high-level objectives and then let the proposals hopefully line up to that.
And, and I think they could propose a mission statement. They, there's already been communication from them to the rest of their colleagues through departmental meetings. So I think we might want to make sure that our thoughts are meshing with where you're at.
Okay, so the, uh, the group can work on that. I think what we'll plan to do once this is ready, um, is a press release with that mission statement and then, um, information on how to obtain the application.
Oh, we were going to do some kind of a portal where people could go online and find it, yes?
Yes, I think that's the idea.
Okay, so how close are we to that?
Um, I need to discuss with our IT department.
Okay, so it would, I would like an update on that. And then it's been user-friendly and checked out and the bugs are gone. And then what kind of a system are we using to, you know, what are we using to file these in? Are we using Box Inc.? And what are we using to collect the data?
Um, I believe it would be through our, um, Agenda Software has the ability to capture things like this.
Right.
Turn them into a PDF, like it's just, that's the final format, would be a PDF and it's on a folder somewhere.
Talking to someone so not impressed with our Agenda Software. So let's, let's see if it can even, if it can even do it.
And we'll, you know, we'll have more shots at this, most likely. So I don't think this is one and done applications and in August, then 20 million flies out the door. That's not my expectation.
Don't have 20 million, we have nine million.
That's right, there you go.
Well, and the other thing is, we haven't seen yet the numbers we need to reimburse ourselves. Where are we with? You know, and, and this kind of goes to the, the, you know, the COVID incentives. We self-fund our health insurance. That was previous in the discussion today. So when our old employees goes to the hospital for a day or two, that's not free. That costs the county and then we charge all y'all to help pay that expense back. So there's a reason, you know, to try to be transparent about this.
My thought was that, you know, don't, you don't, everything doesn't have to be perfect. This is, we'd like it to be really good, but we'll have some more cracks at it. But if we, I think delaying would probably be the wrong approach. So I'd like what we've done so far.
When do you think you'll have some kind of payout numbers for the county reimbursing the county for COVID expenses?
I can work on that for the next meeting.
Right.
I'm sure that's pretty odd, or some of it has been already reimbursed, but...
Well, we want to see that. We have
Right, right.
Yeah, we had nine. Now let's see what, what it looks like.
See what it looks like once we get all the money we've expended back.
You know, projected expenditure for any incentives, 2,000 to 30,000 or whatever, I mean, that's going to come out of that too. At least when you start to look at the spend down, what potential dollars are there? We're not at $9 million available. What do the three of us feel about, um, reaching out to our own networks and inviting people to write an application, a strategic partner? There's not any reason we couldn't do that.
No, I'm lost. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, let's just say we know that Dubuque County early childhood, Jay are on their board. I certainly work with them. They've done amazing things. They've been helping behind the scenes in Holy Cross, um, working on a childcare proposal there. Reaching out to them and saying, you know, you got, come on, we got to do this. But that would be where we're inviting someone to put forth the energy and effort. The mayors in the county have infrastructure needs. They'd like to have us. The mayors in the county have infrastructure needs they'd like to have us look at. You know, can we, just for disclosure, I mean, should we be out there saying and inviting people to bring those ideas forward?
I think that's part of our job is make sure.
You can encourage them to fill out the application. Obviously, you can't make them, but you can encourage them to do it.
I think it's our job to educate and inform and be available to them. And these are federal funds that have come to us. We've never tried to make this a secret and certainly the federal government and all the federal programs have, had been no secret, we've already spent five trillion. So, yeah, I think that would be wise and a good use of funds and good use of all the work we're doing creating the application in the process to hopefully make it fair, equitable, and rewarding.
My last question is about the structure of who's doing the work. There is, one of the funding categories in this is employees who could do the work, right? Compensation can be reimbursed. So where are y'all with that? Who's, who's a budget item for purposes of spending that category dollar?
We have not at this point done any of that or tracked any of that. It is something that we absolutely could do if we want to start tracking time, employee time to this. It's something that the county can reimburse ourselves for.
I would definitely do that. I mean, that's kind of a standard process in most state and federal grants that the, you know, the time base that you put in can be part of that award. And/or I love your question is if we're looking at additional staff or help on a temporary basis, whether it's a year or three years to help administer these. I think those all be wise to look at and be, shouldn't your thoughts? Because we either get the fun or unfun job of either rewarding or saying no, but you get all the fun of the administration.
Yeah, the administration of this.
Kevin said fun, I see your head nodding, yeah. In audit.
It will be a pretty intensive federal program to monitor over the next three, four years. So I think there could be value to hiring services, but I do agree that we should start tracking time to it.
I'd like to see, what I think of is kind of our executive team, Ed, Auditor, Stella, Dawn, Megan. Get some people in looking at how, what's needed to get this list done, to get it right and to meet all of the requirements and the federal reporting requirements. Do we need someone? Do we need to, you know, who's working on it that way? So that's what I guess I'm still missing the administration piece from the group. You know, what's the, what's the cost? How are we going to pick this up? In my perfect world, Stella, you're already turning your attention. July 1st was last week. You're in a new budget year. I'd like to have you start looking at making our budget process bigger, better. And, and so, you know, things that are, are now in year two, not able to be accomplished because COVID interrupted, right? So I'm not sure that I want the budget director to be completely working on this when we're going to be moving into assessing budget needs.
Definitely not 100%.
Very, very right.
So if you have, you know, those closest to it, if you can kind of project out what help you're going to need, I would be open to reviewing that. You know, I don't think we're going to get 1,000 proposals, but as a lesson, I think the first grant that the state did, they allocated 11 million and they ended up spending 111 million in the end for some of their programs. And so they realized that the demand was, was, was out there and that was in the thick of the pandemic. But this will be, you know, above and beyond our normal workload. So let us know what you feel or think you'll need. You might not know that for another couple of weeks or you might not know that till the applications come in, but we can do our best to prepare.
Don't bury yourself. Ask for help if you need it.
Is Ed working on the project as well? Ed, have you been, you weren't originally, are you now, working with the group as well?
At this point, no. We can certainly start to loop in, Ed.
Well, I guess that's a critical question.
More question for us. I think this, so I would think that he should be involved in helping. You have your head as well, so.
Well, I would agree as well, but I don't know that that's the answer to, that's not necessarily the solution to the question we're pondering, like, do you have enough administrative help? Sure, Ed can be in the room and I'm expecting he will be, but that isn't necessarily going to be 100% of Ed's work.
No, no, I agree. You asked the question and so we're trying to answer that one. So one, Ed, I think we got consensus that you should be involved. The other question still stands. What help you need?
And I also think it's critical for the auditor's office to be involved in every step of this too.
Oh, yeah. They're always looking over our shoulders.
Yeah.
So you have.
In a nice and friendly, not creepy way.
To keep moving forward.
What did you say, Harley?
Just ask her she had the direction she needed to keep moving forward. Just wanted to make sure we had all the answers. All the questions answered.
And then I'd like to know next time where you are with the survey. I know we're out of time for today, but the survey has not been discussed in several weeks.
Sure, that's something that the group had worked up initially and we had not had a chance to get to discuss that, so.
Okay, so in two weeks we'll see that as well then?
Yep.
Anything more, Stella, that you want to discuss with us?
I think that's it for today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stella.
Our next work session is with Chandra Ravda from DMAT to discuss the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan. Anthony, you're going to be at the podium with us or at the table. I guess you could share a microphone with Dawn or something.
Yep, I can go right here.
Chandra here.
Hey, I'm here, Ann. Thanks for the invitation today. Is it possible for me to screen? Oh, yeah, okay, you guys got it, thank you. So why we here today is we want to talk a little bit about the long range transportation plan that we are doing.
Give me more value.
How about now, Ann?
Yeah, Chandra, it's not about you, it's about what's able to be heard in this room.
Oh.
That's as loud as it goes.
Okay.
All right, we're underway, thank you.
Thank you. So what we want to do today is give a brief explanation what the DMAT's long range plan is about. And we also want to seek some input from the county, what they are visioning for the future within the DMAT's area. So DMAT is the Metropolitan Transportation Planning Area for the Dubuque region. So brief history, how it's been formed, whenever we have census count, whenever there's a region which has 50,000 more population, then the Census Bureau designates it as urban area, then the Federal Highway and Federal Transit Authority designate them as a metropolitan organization. So the metropolitan organization is held responsible for all the planning and programming of federal aid projects within that region. So Anthony, can you go to the next slide, please? So this is the, the DMAT's region where we are part of three states. We are mostly in Iowa where we cover city of Dubuque, Dubuque County, Asbury, Centrilia, and Piazza, Seju, Durango. And on Wisconsin side, we go a little bit into Keeler area. And then on Illinois side, we cover East Dubuque and part of Joe Davis. So that's how the boundary is being arranged. So we work with three DOTs and three counties and Federal Highway, FDA, and the cities within the region. We are being governed by a policy board where the board is made up of a couple of cities and county. Anthony, can you next slide, please? So here is the, the DMAT's configuration, what's it made up of. We have the DOTs as well as the cities and counties and the regional planning agencies and the transit systems as part of the board. So the question is, next slide, Anthony. The question is, why do we need to do the long range transportation plan? So if you see, most of the transportation projects do take time, like 10 to 15 to 20 years, some take 30 years. So the question comes is, where do we need to invest federal aid dollars in our region? So for that, we need to create a long range plan. Now, the long range plan, when we do, we need to go with some technical process that the Federal Highway and Federal Transit Authority established where we develop a transportation model and obviously we do goals and objectives in the area and all that. And we also look at the needs for the area. So the question comes is, so what is the outcome of the long range transportation plan? The outcome is the list of projects that we need federal aid in future for our, for our region. So we are at a stage within the long range transportation plan where we are seeking input from the members on the federal aid projects. So next slide, Anthony. So if you see this slide, how we come up with areas where we need federal aid projects is through traffic volumes, what the existing and future traffic volumes looks like and what are existing and, and the future pedestrian bicycle needs look like in our region. And we come up with list of projects. But we also want to make sure that our list matches with our counties and cities and make sure that the priorities are the same. Now, the long range plan project, it's a requirement when you're seeking federal aid. If the project is not in the long range plan, it won't be eligible for federal aid. So we want to make sure that our recommendations are matching with the counties and cities in this aspect. Next slide, Anthony. So what this slide shows is the area where we are having existing employment and how our population is growing within our DMAT region and how our transit systems are operating and how airports are functioning. So we deal with all modes of transportation in the long range plan, including the ports. One good example is recently, you saw the news that the city of Dubuque did get, receive, did receive 5 million for Galon facility. That's an outcome of the port expansion study done by the MPO and the city and the county. And that's the part of the long range plan which we came up with. So that's how things flow. First, once it's entered up in the long range plan, and if we need to do more planning study, we go to next step. And from there on, we come up with a project and the project we seek federal aid. So that's how things go on, on the process. So next slide, Anthony. So this is where we are seeing the future within our metro area. If you see, most of the housing units are happening within the county region in and around Sapa Staterio and between Piazza and Dubuque region and then a couple of them on the south. And then the jobs, we are looking at mostly on the west end of Dubuque and then the downtown of Dubuque and a little bit of north and in the county. This is the way we are projecting and these predictions are made on parcel data provided by the county and also the economic development data that we got from the economic development agencies and cities within the region. So next slide, Anthony. This is how the congestion looks like in our region. So if you see, 20 and Sapa Staterio will be pretty bad shape in future. So obviously, any projects that we do should help to ease of congestion on these corridors. And Asbury and Pennsylvania are the next in line. So the projects, what we come up with will make, we will make sure that the traffic patterns within the region are operating with less congestion and less delay and improve the safety of the whole network. So that's what the projects will be addressing. Next slide, Anthony. So here is what we got from city of Dubuque, for example. City of Dubuque has list of projects where they had cost estimates as of today's dollars. So all these projects should be federally eligible. It means that all the counties and cities have federal function classification routes. And if you are seeking federal aid, they should meet the classification route description. We can't fund local roads because they don't meet the description of federal aid. So the county engineer, as well as the city engineers are very well versed with those routes. So whenever they're giving us the list of projects that they want future funding and that meets with the long range plan and the model, they meet the federal aid regulations. So this is the city of Dubuque's list. And if you see, as of now, Dubuque County, next slide, Anthony, sorry. If you see Dubuque County, we have three projects, the Oakland Farm Road, the Frontage Road in Piazza area and paving Heritage Trail. Those are the three projects that we have. Now, US 20 is a DOT route, so it will be treated as special project. It won't be either city's or county's project. And the same thing with 151, 61, and US 20. They all will be DOT, so they'll be regional wide projects and they'll be treated as separate projects. So with that, what we are seeking today from the county is we got three projects from the county within DMAT's area, the Oakland Farm Road and Frontage Road and paving Heritage Trail. Other, other projects that the county want us to look into or add to the long range plan to be considered for federal funds in future, so.
Is that a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a question.
We're in a whirlwind here.
Yeah, so.
Is that a question?
Yeah, one thing I want to explain to the board is if you're looking at a resurfacing project, most of resurfacing projects come under operation maintenance, so you don't need to list that. But if we are trying to do a capacity improvement or a major reconstruction, those projects should be on this list. So Oakland Farm Road, my understanding is a major reconstruction. Obviously, it should be on the list. The Frontage Road that the county is looking for, Piazza, between, in the county, around Thunder Hills and Cock Springs to, to the Swiss Valley interchange. That's a brand new construction, so that should be here. Paving Heritage Trail, it's a, it's a new improvement. It's not in a regular maintenance, so that's on the list. So we want projects that meet that kind of criteria. So the question to the supervisors and the county engineers is, are there projects you want to add to this list from the county?
Anthony, what do you think?
Yeah, well, from my perspective, a couple of projects that I just kind of jotted down here and I've been thinking on for a while too is Sundown Road South from Piazza to Highway 151. I mean, we've talked about that before. There's, there's going to be some obvious need for capacity improvements there. Who knows, maybe a potential four lane at some point. You know, so that would be a big idea project that would be many, many years in the making, but you know, it's something I think put into the long range planning. And also, you know, the situation we're dealing with, with Old Davenport Road and Shugal Heights Road, sort of this, this, I'll just call this truck route gap that we're experiencing in that southeast part of, part of the county. The idea was to try to get people onto 151 and loop back around to 52. But that's not necessarily the, the pattern that's existing right now or people are taking. So there, there are some improvements I think we need to make in truck routes on county roads in the southeast part. You know, that, but that's, that's so, that's kind of a gray, gray area discussion, you know. But we should be thinking that and, you know, going, going to the future. So capacity improvements for truck routes in the southeast part of the county, I think is kind of how I would label that.
What about Old 20? I know we, we have some of that planned, but basically from, you know, the Fairgrounds all the way out to Farley.
Yeah, Old 20, you know, we do have it in the five-year plan for rehabilitability, rehab, you know, resurfacing, you know, nothing for as far as major reconstruction. New right of way, we don't have the funds designated for that. But as far as taking care of what we have there, we have that pretty well covered all the way across the county.
This is just a five-year plan, correct?
Well, this is a, this is a plan, but we visit every five years based on the requirements, so.
Then I, I think we should consider moving beyond Frontage Road of Cock Springs. You know, 20 is a mess all the way out. So if you are trying to project, we, we need to create that as a true corridor. So putting in more frontage roads, you know, I've already been contacted by individuals in F Worth saying their buses have the same problem there, trying to turn through all that traffic. So I, I don't know if that's Frontage Road, I don't, if that's another, I don't know, Anthony. What's the answer to that, but?
Yeah, you know, and this is the discussion that we, we should be bringing the DOT in this too. It seems like, you know, we're stepping in and, and trying to solve some of these capacity issues or traffic problems that, that are being experienced on Highway 20. But you know, at, at some point, we need the DOT to step in and be a partner in this as well. So yes, I think we need to look at our Highway 20 corridor and all those access grade locations. But the DOT, in my opinion, needs to be a partner in this as well.
So have we, go ahead, please.
Sorry, sorry, Ann. So Anthony, can you please go to slide number five, please? Yeah, one more up. Just keep on going. One up. So if you see the boundary supervisors.
Can you make it full screen?
Yeah, he's bringing up a good point. We're, we're talking about the DMAT's region and it doesn't stretch west of Piazza. I forgot.
Oh, I see. Is that, is that hard? Is that a hard stop?
Yeah, because that's where the boundary stops according to the Iowa DOT and Federal Highway, so.
Yeah. Like any of it is, is it? Anyway. Yeah, you're right about half of it.
The ten?
Yeah.
So Chandra, what do we do to make the all-of-Highway twenty corridor be um, you know, part of the, but part of, who should look at that? That's the growth.
A a couple of things, Ann. Uh, what happens is we got the new census numbers coming in. Uh, basing on the new census numbers, next physical, and sorry, next year, we'll be appro- approached by federal highway and Iowa DOT to see if we want to adjust our boundary, but they'll have set criteria to adjust the boundary. Basing on the data, we need to see, can we add Fworth, you know, Farley into the MPA boundary or not, if if it meets the requirements or not. If not, then that project what you guys are discussing about Fworth should come under the RPA long range plan. And that's where we will be looking at federal funds through that uh programs, through the RPA rather than the MPO, so.
Chandra, can you hear Ed Raver?
No, I can't, sorry.
Okay.
Hi, Chandra, this is Ed.
Oh, hi, Ed.
A question about the the Dubuque County project you had listed as a frontage road on in or around Cock Springs Road. There has been some discussion about an access point to US twenty there. Um, is there a different set of language? Because that project, that concept is is in flux, but does seem to be one that is forward-looking in the long range perspective, you know, twenty years or something like that potentially. Should that be not just a frontage road, but should that be uh uh capacity improvements that that might also include an access point like an interchange of some kind? Is there a different way of saying frontage road in that area on or around Cock Springs?
So what we are doing here, Ed, is two parts. One, uh, the frontage road, that's just what county is looking now. The interchange there will be a Iowa DOT project, so that will be region-wide project. So it will be the next in line, you know. Uh, if you see the green uh regional wide project, if you see that, you'll see US twenty improvement, Piazza interchange. You know, uh, from Piazza interchange to Dune Dubuque Bridge, all the improvements for US twenty comes under that, that will be the interchange in Thunder Hills and Cock Springs. So we we want to separate this as two different projects because the DOT doesn't want to look at frontage road as their project. They don't want to accept it as their project. But on the other side, if that's the requirement that the county and the cities really want to do, then it should bill shit in the long range plan in some format. That's why we had it as frontage road. The rest of the improvements will come under US twenty improvements in the region-wide projects.
And those region-wide, Anthony, just who's standing right next to me, saying that the the DOT projects are those region-wide projects? Is that another word for the Iowa DOT plans in the area for this time horizon?
Is it a question for me or Anthony? Sorry.
No, no, it was it was just a conversation that Anthony was just having with me is that the potentially an interchange would be something that's a DOT sort of uh thing. So are the region-wide projects, are those the DOT's plans for our region? Is there a sec- you have Asbury, Dubuque County? Is there another section that's going to be Iowa DOT plans in our region for the next?
No, the way we look at it is any DOT project will be region-wide project because it impacts the whole region. Uh, for example, uh, the DOT is looking at improvements at North Estatio and US twenty. Even though that project is in City of Dubuque, that impacts the overall trip patterns within the metropolitan area, so it's a region-wide project. Uh, the any improvement on US twenty will be impacting the whole region, so that's region-wide project. So most of the DOT projects, almost most of everything comes under region-wide. So uh, all the DOT projects will be under region-wide. So we don't want to have a separate tab for Iowa DOT because then we don't have any individual project just for Iowa DOT, you know, so.
But if Dubuque County wanted to push for an interchange at Highway twenty at Piazza, um, we wouldn't want to list it under our own priority or our own project because that would be a.
Yeah, so one thing we recommend not to do that because once it's under your priority, then that's your your thing to figure out how to get with federally. So if you want that, we can move it under county, you you if that's county's count, so.
What is the timeline to finish this, this pred, this long-range plan?
So.
I think we're being, we're being presented with things that are have long-range implications. And I don't think, you know, I I think I'm missing some people out in the field. Where's where's Jim Merton? Where's, you know, there's people maybe who should be in the room or who are stakeholders.
Agreed, but this isn't a hundred percent gospel either. It's not done, right? So I mean, you get some other chances on this, so it's not like you have to do these projects or can't add another one. This is a plan, obviously, you'd like it to be the best plan, but it's not, it's not a hard application. Is that correct, Chandra? Did I categorize that correct or maybe with?
Uh, you're right, uh, Jay. Uh, so and to answer your question, yes, we did present this to all cities and counties. So we met with the Piazza, we met with Asbury, we met with the City of Dubuque and East Dubuque, uh, and we are meeting with you guys. So when we looked at this, we made sure that everyone's interests are met and then looked upon. One thing we recommended members is not to give projects that are uh, like in small scale, we don't want projects that are like fifty thousand or hundred thousand because once you add federally to that, the cost will go up. Uh, so, yes, all the members had this discussion, but we also gave everyone time. Uh, you can submit your projects until August first week to us. So if you guys want to have an internal discussion and have some meetings with us in July, we'll be more happy to come and meet with you guys and have more discussions on this and flush more projects. Uh, so your call, uh, once the plan is done, we got five more years to come up with more list and at the next plan, we can update it. It's not like set in stone that we can't change after five years. So we can change as we go, but every five years is when we change it, so.
But one thing we will want to make sure that we get solidified fairly soon here. If we're going to start planning and thinking about a frontage road or something like that in the Piazza area, we need to have this in the long range plan so it can be moved into the tip. Is that correct, Chandra?
Yeah, so here is how uh it works. So for example, I'll I'll just use the county as an example. So your department heads, they have, they will have plans saying, hey, this is what we should do. Then they'll do their five-year program basing on the budget. And then that's what the board will approve and that's what they submit to the respective agency like in Dubuque County, you know, submit to the Iowa DOT. So the same thing with the long range plan. The long range plan is the wish list, what we want in the region. From there on, the tip is your four-year program saying that this is the amount we have and these are the projects we want to do. Some will make through, some won't make through. Once the tip, tip is literally your financial document saying this is what we are doing and this is where the money will go. And from there on, it submits to the DOT and the D-Max Board. It gets approved and the projects will go into bidding and the design and all that stuff. So to get into the tip, the project should be in the long range plan, otherwise it won't get qualified. The Frontage Road as of now is not in the long range plan, it won't get qualified. That's why it's in the new long range plan, so.
Wh- what about the um where we cross with the build grant? So where we cross Highway three?
Yeah.
That's going to be an issue there for development.
So if I'm understanding. Sorry, Ann, so are we looking at development on the uh west side of Iowa three? Are we talking about the east side of Iowa three?
I guess I'm talking, if we're going to look at twenty fifty and I know the partners in Sageville and we have what we've talked about in terms of planned growth for conservation and development ideas, I mean, just the blending of things that we're seeing intersect down there. I we have a a crossing problem from the build grant.
Road crossing problem.
A road crossing, right? But that could be a pedestrian crossing. Have it, have we thought about, is there a need in that area to put something on the long range plan that would allow us to be looking to solve those issues?
You're saying, you're saying instead of a the accurate crossing that we've kind of discussed, maybe something that's more uh like whether it be a bridge or some other kind of safe crossing to get a.
I am. I don't, I'm assuming it's a raised pedestrian crossing. So, you know, where you can bring bikes up and over two.
I think we're going to need another session if we're going to go in these level of details when we have a lot of good ideas, but you know.
I don't disagree, we probably do need another session on this. But if this is the the kind of the time to say, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace kind of.
Said we have time, Chandra, what's our timeline? We've got more time.
Yeah, so we we can do one more work session with the supervisors sometime in July, so me and Anthony.
Longer than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can do that and we can come up with more projects. So uh we'll be more happy to come and meet in person with the supervisors and the engineer and go through details, so.
Maybe give us about an hour to discuss this?
Don't you think? And I I would prefer it be in person if we have to go to ECIA.
Yeah.
Oh, I can be at the courthouse, sorry. And I can be at the courthouse and me and Dan will be there.
Yeah, no, I understand, but we might want to have a, you know, I don't know that we want other people like Jim Merton. Maybe we want to have some of our mayors involved so they're aware. I I guess that there's a hard stop, I get that, they don't understand that. But we'd prefer the discussion.
Yeah, I like that idea, Ann. So, yeah, you guys can decide a date and we'll invite the mayors to to join and we can have more discussions on this, so.
And if we, if I attend that meeting next Thursday with the mayors, you know, uh, then we can talk about that as well. Kind of say, hey, we're going to have a meeting to discuss this in July, um, you know, and here's here's what this means. And you know, we could prep them a little bit next week too.
Yes, that'd be good. Thank you, Chandra.
Thank you so much, supervisors, thanks for the time.
Learning, learned a bunch, thank you.
Thanks, Chandra.
Yeah.
Anything else for me on this?
Pardon?
Anything else for me on this?
Well, thank you.
Glad you were here, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony.
Our eleven o'clock work session is with Randy Renison. Um, and I know Ed's been deeply involved in this for general assistance program updates. Welcome, Randy. Also, now you carry the title of General Assistance Director.
That has been tabled.
That's been tabled?
Well, but the resolution hasn't been put in yet or.
Oh, we have this one, but you got the designation.
Yeah, I guess so, wasn't I? Still on vacation.
Right, we do have to go back and do something that was tabled from earlier this morning. We have a resolution we need to be looking at as well. What should Dawn be screen sharing here?
Why don't we start with the application first? That'd be kind of a short one.
Okay, uh, after I was appointed, uh, even before then, we're kind of talking to some of the other different counties and then also the different organizations that are within Dubuque County that offers some type of assistance to help individuals. And me and the staff kind of came up with the thing of uh look at our old application process. And we thought, you know, why would we have a person sign their name thirty-three times for different items? So we kind of started narrowing it down, uh, what we really would think the county would need to, for their requests. Uh, took some input from all the other counties and then also the the board that we've been talking to. And we kind of narrowed it down, like so we took out uh a lot of the releases because a lot of times that's what hung the application process up. And, you know, we don't want to wait too long, sometimes it take up to a month for those to get them releases back. Uh, and the agencies actually said that they get a lot of that information from the individuals. And but if you look at like, uh, I know we just have bank statements sixty days. Uh, a lot of times you can see if individual takes a large withdrawal of uh from their bank. Uh, that was from Sassy. They said, you know, they could tell they might have a gambling problem or something like that. So we just kind of want it down. Uh, we took away, I don't think you guys really need to know uh how many times they've been married. Where's all their relatives at? Fifth cousin, you know, twice removed. We took that portion out, uh, just ask who lives in, pretty much is in the household. So we just came up with a short application process. Uh, we did have a funeral on July first, a county burial, that we had to go back with the old application because this new application hasn't been approved by you guys. So we just went with that old application, got that taken care of. Yeah, but our commissioners kind of are going to go with the same uh program with the Veterans Affairs side. Uh, it's a little bit different, you know, DD two fourteen and so forth like that. But this is what we're going to be asking the organizations when uh the point of entry to say, before they come to see us, this is what we're requiring from them. That way, if they do get assistance from the county, we're going to either approve them or disapprove them. Uh, and when we go to the actual guidelines or the policy, we kind of made some corrections in there too, uh, because we did talk to some of the other counties and they do have a little bit better ideas of, I know, like Lynn County, they have ten times more budget and their general assistance, they have over a million plus dollars. Uh, so we kind of want to go with similar to what they've offered to, to make it a lot easier for individuals to go there uh and get it taken care of, so.
So can I ask you on the application process, the application that you have, how many pages will this be now?
Uh, I think it dropped down to five, four.
And what feedback, what feedback did you get from your final draft here? From the folks who are in the coordinated entry program, those core organizations you're working with? What is their feedback on the application?
Their feedback's pretty, they're positive that now they know what, when an individual comes. Uh, because we also kind of looked at, well, I looked at, I'm kind of going with what Jay said earlier. Why does the county have to get stuck with the bill for a lot of individuals? Uh, you look at the actual general assistance, about ninety, ninety percent is actually from the City of Dubuque. So why do the other ten percent of the smaller towns have to pay, you know, rent, utilities, so forth like that? Uh, I mean, that we, I came up with that before it was brought up today. But majority of the assistance are that come through the doors of the county are actually from the City of Dubuque. Uh, so, I mean, that's why when we started going over the guidelines, I kind of narrowed it down a little bit. Uh, our staff talked about it also. But the, I guess the committee, ECIA, that runs it in that point of entry program, they are really re- uh ready for it. Uh, I said after we have a meeting today and whatever happens today, we're going to pass it on and actually have a sit-down meeting with them to make sure that, because they got a lot of federal fundings too. And instead of uh, you know, an individual coming in here and saying, I need twelve hundred dollars for utilities, some of these other agencies will be able to say, would the county be willing just to give them three hundred dollars? And so forth. So I mean, it it actually worked pretty good, the way, and Lynn County really has, they're kind of a couple of years ahead of us. But they, the program they have is really, you know, right on. All the uh individuals work really well together and stuff, so. And I know this committee here is really uh are willing to work with us to get it taken care of.
Yeah, I'm really optimistic, I really am. I appreciate your leadership position in working with those key stakeholders to think through this process. I think it benefits, it benefits us as a county administration, but I think it really does benefit the folks that who need the help. It will streamline things and make it much more uh obvious how they can inter- intercept with other funding balance, you know, other funding pockets of money. I think it's wise.
And they actually break them down into two different groups. People that maybe lead long-term goals and then the short-term goals. And we'll be more dealing with the short-term goals. Maybe they might might need three hundred dollars for rent to just get them over that little hump, get them back on their feet and stuff like that, so. But uh, I mean, they're very optimistic. And with the, since I'm not a part of the committee yet, since this hasn't been approved, uh, I haven't got the spreadsheet how they put the information in and it actually, all the departments actually uh in this committee are able to uh look it over. are able to, uh, look it over to say, okay, we gave them three hundred dollars. Uh, ECIA gave them three hundred, uh, Hillcrest gave them two hundred, and it actually breaks it all down and stuff like that. So it'll actually kind of be a little bit more beneficial. Uh, but if you wanna go to the actual, the guidelines, uh, we did kinda mark out quite a bit. Because really, the Iowa code doesn't actually say what is required for the county to actually, uh, you know, approve or disapprove. Uh, I do know, like, if you, I, I don't know if you wanna go through the whole guidelines or if you guys already skimmed a lot of it. I mean, the big keys was, uh.
I, I read it and I liked a lot of your changes, so.
Like the total of the guidelines?
Yeah.
You guys were offering a thousand dollars for an individual per year or two thousand for a family. Uh, we did knock it down to, I know Lynn County offers four fifty per year. But I asked also, is that a one-time thing? And they said, no. Uh, so, I mean, it'd be your call. Uh, but we actually did, you know, four twenty-five for a family. And, but they said that usually there's some individuals that January, when their year's up, February, they're getting a new application because they want that assistance at that time. So, I mean, that'd be totally up to you if you just wanted a one-time thing or a yearly thing. I mean, well, it'd be a yearly thing, but how many times can they actually come per year, or not per year, but within a fiscal five, five years, how many times can they come? Can they come every five years, every, or every year and then five years to get four twenty-five? Because they know, you know, our guidelines now. But, uh, and then also took out the propane, especially with our county residents. I mean, a hundred and fifty dollars. That wasn't really too much to fill up a propane. I think that'd be maybe two weeks' worth of propane for individuals, so that, that's why we took that out. And then also, uh, you know, the rent and so forth like that, but, I mean, that was probably our key point was to maybe put a dollar amount in. That way, if this outside agency actually, and then we just did a little calculation, you know, if a hundred families come in and if we do give them the full amount of four twenty-five, you know, that's only four, forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for a fiscal year. If a hundred families do come in. I mean, I don't know how many individuals will be coming in. Uh, I know I've been reading the paper about the moratorium coming up for evictions. Is, uh, supposed to be coming up, but the city's supposed to be working on a plan. I don't know how much they're gonna be willing to, uh, help. Because I know the last program, they said a hundred and some individuals applied, but only like ten people were approved because of the guidelines.
Right.
So.
So the assistant amounts, and there's two sections of that. So there's the rent and then there's the annual cap and utilities and so forth. Have your partners seen these dollar amounts at saying?
We put it out to them, but, and they're, they're pretty much, that way, if an individual's, uh, they know if an individual comes or calls our office, we're sending them straight to them. That way, they can get them in the system to see if they're a long-term or short-term goal or individual. Then if, uh, ECIA does need assistance, but the individual needs eight hundred dollars, they know they're not gonna come to the county right away and say, well, we want the whole eight hundred dollars to pay our rent.
So on page nine, there's a comment on the side and it talks about, um, the amounts of rent. And your comment on the side, the red line indicates you would like us to bump those up. Um, do you need us to do that here or, or is this a draft? Where are you in the final process?
I would really like to get approval today. Uh, we are starting to receive phone calls, uh, for general assistance. But we've been received, uh, pointing to, uh, the actual committee.
Right.
Uh, that way we can get it started. If, uh, they have their application, they know what we're looking or the county's actually needs the information, uh, that way we can just go, okay, this is the most you're gonna get. Uh, they're, you know, not the two thousand dollars like it was previously. Because that's what kinda, I mean, there was a lot of big bills on that.
Right. So what would you like us to put in that paragraph F?
The, the comment there, uh, this is Ed Raver. Um, the, our, our partner agencies around there haven't said that we have got the wrong number. Um, and in fact, I think if they're okay with just backing into that, they may even, i- if you didn't want to approve it, uh, an increase there today, that could be just evaluating how is it working in six months. It, it, um, but if you did, as I said, the, uh, in that comment, um, something that's, uh, it's between three fifty and four fifty for, for each of those categories, between single person or a family. If, if you would like to do that, that, that would be, that would be great. We could just make those changes now. But again, the partners haven't said you've done this wrong or it's the wrong amount. It is what it is. We'll find out how effective that makes us as a partner with whatever number that is, and we may come back to you or Veterans Affairs may come back to you with a, a different opinion in six months or a year based on how it's actually worked. We won't know until then.
Those numbers are very low. I would be inclined to increase them today if my colleagues are agreeable. I just need to have you say what the dollars should be in section F. What number do you want?
Um, I would say, uh, a single person would be three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, a family would be four hundred and fifty dollars without utilities. And then there is a slight per diem of twenty-five dollars in there, uh, if they happen to have utilities, so.
Adding twenty-five dollars, uh, if they have to pay their own utilities? Okay. I mean, I would, I would make that in the form of a motion that we would increase the rental amounts, um, under these new guidelines to the dollars that they've just described.
I'm comfortable with that or comfortable with the whole document, but whatever, whatever detail you think we need, I'm, I'm game for it.
Just make the motion to approved resolution for the document with the changes for the rent assistance. And, because we have the resolution to approve for the.
We could do that as well. I think that would still.
Yeah, usually we don't see too many with utilities. A lot of rental places around here, individuals have to pay their own utilities, unfortunately.
I'm just trying to get it right so that we get it right for the minute. So we know what we've done and then we're not looking back and wondering. So the resolution approves the new document, okay? And then if we include the new dollar amounts for the rentals, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I do have a couple of questions I haven't got to yet.
Okay, then I'm just gonna withdraw. Let's go back to more discussion.
Sometimes I have to wait to get in. All right, um, so will people still come to your office?
No. The only time they would come would be, and I think a burial, that's the only time. Uh, and I think Kevin, um, Nathan are working on a program where individuals, if they wanted to ECIA, instead of have them all come all the way down to sign the vouchers. And we're working on a plan on how to do the digital signature or some kind of payment where we don't make these individuals run all the way from ECIA down to here or vice versa. So, but when they call our office, we point them right to that direct hotline. They take the input, because they're the social workers, and they're gonna find out exactly if they're in the long term or the short term. Then they do all the paperwork. They know what our application process is. Then from there, they would call us if they would meet the guidelines of ours and say, well, we're willing to pay four hundred dollars. Would the county be willing to pay three hundred? If we say yes, then, then at that time, we're not figuring out how to do the vouchers.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then, so will any of your staff be assigned to the applicants? Like they were in the past to work with them and talk to them?
Well, uh, the applicants, the only one probably would be Tammy to, uh, put these in some kind of a PDF, uh, since we don't have files anymore. And we'll have to come up with our, uh, digital, the, how we did all of the files to digital. And we'll have to do that somehow to just keep track. That way, if we ever got audited, we can just pull it out and say, well, we gave the three hundred dollars to this person and so forth like that, so. But otherwise, no one would be coming into the office at any given time.
So, so Nick and Doug would be a hundred percent dedicated to Veterans Affairs?
Right, uh, I did talk to the VA out there in Dubuque and they are kind of relaxing the protocol. So individuals are now allowed to bring one, uh, caretaker, spouse, or whatever into the actual facility or Iowa City. And so they're, uh, actually working quite a bit that, and they're hopefully, so the COVID shot and the flu shot and everything was actually in the office that they gave us. So they're gonna hopefully move them out and, uh, able to do that, so. And then Nick's been working really good with our DAV, uh, helping with the van, uh, because we're gonna need a lot of volunteers for the DAV van to take our veterans down to Iowa City, so.
Well, these are, these are good things to hear. I just, you know, as I mentioned, I wanted as much resources as we could from.
Right, we're, we're trying to get back out to the Dubuque clinic like we did, give people, and I know this Saturday is the Yellow Ribbon down Iowa City, so we're gonna probably get a big fluctuation of the returning veterans. So I'll be heading down there Saturday and Sunday to do the Yellow Ribbon with the Blackhawk County Executive Director.
Good, very good. Um, and then the last question I had is, we removed the closed session for appeals. Do we, if an appeal would happen, is it, will it be in closed session or is that still to be determined or will that be an open session? That's the only question I have.
I understand it is, uh, some of the other counties, I'm gonna write a letter to the individual. Uh, if they're saying that they need eight hundred dollars, I'll write a letter saying, unfortunately, you're above our guidelines. You have the right to write an appeal to the Board of Supervisors. Then you guys would get the letter and make the decision by that letter. And then you would tell me to write that person back saying, unfortunately, you're above the guidelines.
Okay. Um, maybe we can address this when it happens. I just saw that was removed, so I didn't know.
I think the reason.
Maybe in my law it has to be closed. I don't, I don't know. So that's good. I think that's part of the grant.
I think the reason a lot of appeals happened was because of that two thousand dollars allotment that was people, you know, you've got two thousand dollars that they, they're able to get assistance. I think if we bring that amount down, people understand we're not gonna be paying eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred dollars worth of electricity bills. This is the most, the county, and, you know, another thing, like I said, was I, me personally, you know, I love Dubuque, city Dubuque and Dubuque County, but I feel sorry for a lot of the individuals that live outside city Dubuque, because a lot of the individuals we do receive are from the city Dubuque. And I think city Dubuque, you know, they help us with the water, which is great, the water assistance, uh, they help with that. Uh, maybe we can get with them to also help with some of the utility costs on some. And I know that they're doing the solar panel now, which is gonna be, but a lot of our rentals, they don't have the property, they have to have the owner of the property to actually put the solar panels up, so.
And one other question, and maybe Stella can listen to this one. Is there any fees to belong to this coalition and this group? Do we have to pay any fees?
Nope, no, no fees. I know Lynn County, they do have an individual that actually works for the committee and the general assistance, and his main job is to take the input, put all the system in, and then that's when all the other agencies go in there and start looking at, uh, who the individual is and so forth like that.
So when we budget this, almost all of our funds will be going to need, actually. Out the door, we won't be allocating Doug and Nick to, to this program any longer. Okay, that's kind of what it sounds like. And, and maybe a percentage of Randy Sally would be audited towards this program and a lion's share would be to Veterans Affairs. Is that the concept? Uh, I like it. It's good. I think that's a, I think it sounds like a, a good, a good fit, good win, so thank you. I'll tell the questions I have.
Ed, I wanna listen. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. No, good, good work.
I'm super delighted. Thank you. Bravo.
We did not, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I know, I'm still. Very delighted. Three years coming. Thank you, thank you.
All right. I would make the motion to approved resolution for the revised assistance application with the changes added to the rent assistance to single three hundred and fifty and family four hundred and fifty.
I will second that.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
We'll look forward to a report. Thank you, Ed, too. I know you were behind the scenes working on this for the better part of a year, so well done. Okay, um, boards and commissions updates.
Conservation first or you guys have other things?
Yeah, that's fine. I know Art's in the room. I would invite him to table.
That would be wonderful.
Anything to, to learn.
Art, come up in the hot seat, hot seat. And then Dawn, I did send you the document that was on the agenda for that meeting we were talking about. That was included in the packet. It's the document. You'll see it. It was on our agenda for conservation.
I hear. If you're okay with that kind of proximity in a post-COVID world.
Those are, sometimes get a little hot, those mics, but Mary will do her magic when she needs to.
Activate one of the microphones to green. Just push it red to green.
I sent an email. I think it.
I didn't see a document in the packet.
It was in our board packet for conservation.
Oh, maybe I did. I've already seen it, so there we go.
Yeah, it's, so we're talking about what happened to Board of Supervi- or, excuse me, the Conservation Board. So I'll, I'll lead off. I see, uh, Brian Preston on there as well, um, remote. He can fill in. But in, in short, this was the content that, uh, that Art brought to the Conservation Board, uh, in our last meeting, which was on the fourteenth, I believe. I'd have to look at the date.
Sixteenth or seventeenth.
Okay, I was close. Um, sixteenth or seventeenth, um, of June, of June. And, uh, basically, it's a concept, uh, that, uh, Art had described in, in our opening public comments. But it's basically to create a ballot initiative to generate, uh, income so that we can invest in parks, trails, clean water, a variety of things. And it's been done a numerous, numerous times in, 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 in the state of Iowa. I will repeat a lot what Art said. Maybe I'll give you the, my interpretation of what happened. The end result of conversation was there was a, a motion by Stacy Conforty, uh, seconded by myself, and then a three-one vote, uh, with Wickham Conforty and Gatto and Pat Ray as a nay, and then George Davis abstained. Um, those are my notes. The official minutes haven't come out. Um, he abstained and he just said he, he supported it, but it wasn't time enough. And basically, that motion was, was verbal and it was to petition the Board of Supervisors to consider this ballot initiative um, for the Dubuque County land and water legacy. And this is where we just checked the notes within the next year. So it wasn't, wasn't September or October, November, March, whatever dates would be eligible.
You said within the next twelve months.
With twelve months, so I was close, just different wordage. Um, within the next twelve months. And so that was passed. And so that's the onus for it being on the agenda here is that the Conservation Board had, had done that and, uh, I felt it was fair to present it to the Board of Supervisors. And so with that, I will pause. I don't know if you wanted to hear from Brian or other people, but if you had any questions.
Art, is there anything more you wanted to add? I mean, you made your comments right away at the podium and I know, you know, that's maybe sometimes a more condensed format, but, I mean, this is intended to be more conversational as well. We posted it specifically on the agenda so that it would be, that people would see. Um, I, I expect you're going to have some kind of a formal proposal to us when you bring, I mean, you talked about a petition that you are likely to have or something. And I'm not trying to take any wind out of sails for that, right? If you've got something big planned. Um, my dismay was learning more about it from the Telegraph Herald who'd been at your meeting. You know, when I read it in the paper, was more information than I knew as a supervisor. So that's why I asked that we kind of get the information, so we know what we can say to citizens who are now asking us about this. Um, do, you know, and if this isn't the, the time, that's fine, but Art, from your comments this morning, the PAC that you've mentioned, Dubuque County Land and Legacy, um, that you would be supporting the Board of Supervisors, do you see the passage of this referendum to be the work of the Board of Supervisors?
No, no. Um, our, our organization, our PAC, um, exists to shepherd the bond referendum proposal through the two levels of approval that it requires. One is the County Conservation Board, and their job then, if, if, if they. Their job then, if, if, if they choose to exercise it, was to, uh, petition the Board of Supervisors to, um, place this on the ballot. That was, that was the nature of the, of the petition. Um, and, um, and then, and then, of course, it's completely up to the Board of Supervisors to, to act on that petition in any way they choose. Um, our organization stands by to help, um, the whole process of the campaign that would be required with the general public to, uh, to educate and interest the general public in, in this issue and to seek 60% of them to go to the polls and vote yes.
Right, so I guess that's the, some of my question, which is, I'm unlikely to support being a ballot initiative if I don't think it has robust campaign legs, somebody doing the work to get the result, right? Because otherwise all we're doing is making something for the auditor's office to do and you're going to charge the county, those aren't pretend costs, those are real costs. So, you know, that, that if we're going to do this and it's our one and only, probably likelihood, we hope, one and only time that we're going to do this, what's the oomph behind it? Where's the power to bring that campaign out to the whole community? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and it's, I got to say that it's a little bit, um, the cart and the horse, or which came first. I'm not sure how to express this idea, but, um, we are, we are approaching organizations and they're saying, well, where are, where's the County Board of Supervisors at with this? Are, will they, will they bring this forward? And we're saying that we think they will if there is enough groundswell of support from organizations and individuals in the community. And so it's a little, there's a little hesitation on both sides. We are, and we're, we're working with, um, approaching organizations in the county uh, to, uh, to give us an official, or as official as they're able to, um, uh, affirmation of their support for this. And that, that would, that would mean not, we're not asking at this time for any kind of campaign, um, funds. We're just asking for, for their show of support and their willingness to, um, work with their memberships, whatever, whatever kind of organization it is, whatever ways they have to, um, create interest among their membership to, uh.
And you've already met with a half a dozen or 10?
Yeah, we, we've met, for example, with, uh, Friends of the Mines of Spain, friends of Dubuque County Conservation Board, um.
There was a, there was a list in the, in the paper that.
Has, has everyone been positive?
Yes, yes.
Got any noes yet?
We, no, we, the only, the only thing that would resemble a no are organizations that do not, um, make formal endorsements of bond issues. So, and they're, they're not, they're not saying they don't support it, they're just saying, we don't, we don't do that.
Right. Well, and I'm not, I'm not asking to put the cart before the horse, or however you say that. That's, I just really want to be, I need to be informed about where we are and kind of what it looks like, what the effort's going to be going forward. Um, because that's, that's what I would need to see. And you, we've talked about that on the phone, that there's, you know, that, the energy and the drive to bring this home before we do the expense of the campaign, um, setting it all up for the county.
Maybe on the expense side, if we did this with a regular election, there'd be a lot less expense, or none? It'd be free, or close to at least to be a tag on.
Do you mind, Kevin, if you want to step forward or join us here?
I'd do it in November. If you do it in November, if you do it in November, there's, there's marginal cost, my understanding. Certainly all the costs on the PAC would be private, wouldn't be any public money in your PAC. That'd be all private money.
Right, 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 right.
So the expense of, of the initiative for the public would be what, Kevin? For an election?
I think we estimated the, excuse me, we estimated the cost to be between $12 and, uh, $20,000, depending on the time of the year. Um, but it would be, you know, we're looking at three potential elections. Uh, we have the September primary, we have the November general, and then we're likely looking at a special election next March. And, uh.
What's after that? We got, they, they. So it would be the election of '22 would be outside the 12-months envelope of the Board of Conservation?
Given the timeline that was laid out right now, you would get, yeah, it would get you up to the primary in '22, which would fall in June, right around.
June-ish, yeah, oh.
Right around that 12-month timeframe. And for example, if you wanted to get it on this November's ballot, we would need approval and bond measure language by September 16th.
And the supervisors would create that bond level, that, that ballot language.
Correct, but we, we would need it no later than the 16th, likely, uh.
Of September.
Hopefully, correct.
So, so two months.
I think that would be really pushing the issue pretty hard to get it on the November election, to be honest. If you want to get the information out and educate people, you're already in July, you haven't started yet.
Agreed, but I think, I think you, you know, with social media, with awareness, it's already in Telegraph Herald, and I think we've done a lot of steps as well that, you know, I think are wise. We've got the strategic plan, we've got the, the largest use ever related to our, our parks or wrecks. We've got a water quality initiative going, which we can work with that as well. None of those were really available, um, you know, three years ago. And so you certainly could wait, but, uh, I, I think, I think it, it just seems like this year is a good year and to put it on November election, you've got, it's not a special election, and you let the voters decide. I think, uh.
I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, so I know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I just wanted some more information.
Right.
As to, I didn't know anything about it until June, when I get a phone call and was like, where'd this come from? I'm kind of blindsided, you know, 40 million's a lot of money.
Right, and, and we've got Brian Preston out in Netherlands here in virtual world, but, you know, I think we've gotten some, I think, I feel like we've got enough information to know what we're looking at. And what I understand you'd be saying is you're building, you think there, you believe there's a grassroots network that wants this done and you're looking forward to capitalize on it. So it's all part of a discussion that will be unfolding and it's a lot of hard work. My comment would be, after working two times on the sales tax for the school district years ago, when I had little ones in, in elementary school, um, the heartbreak of losing is so bad that you really, 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 you can't work hard enough to get to yes. You know, that's the, the thing, that it's not, you go at it again, or we're going to try it again in a few years, because we were so close. You know, our peers, maybe you could say it's Johnson or Lynn, but maybe it's Jackson in Delaware trying to get the, a referendum to get a jail, right? Maybe those are also our, our peer group of trying to get things passed. And they just have been at that a long.
Yeah, hopefully a little different. I mean, sheriff can probably come in here, no one likes to pay for a jail, okay? And I voted against the last $600,000 jail budget item, so I'm, I'm definitely in that no category as well. Um, uh, I, I believe this is a different time, a different place, and I, I think it is the time. I think government traditionally moves very slow. And for us to delay it more, sure, you could do it in March, or you could do it next year, or you could do it when there's more different supervisors. But, um, I, I think, you know, being a ballot initiative, I, that gives me more comfort that you're going to put it in the citizen's hands of democracy. And so if it was us just making the decision, I would absolutely want a lot, 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 lot more things. But, you know, going to the public, I think we can present that to them. So I, this is just enough.
Just to pull up on that. The, the point is, we, we have to do this because we have to be sure it's a wise expenditure of government funds and that there's a mo, movement behind this. Otherwise, we could have referendums for lots of things all the time, right? So that's why we're supposed to be listening and learning. And I am looking for that energy, and clear with you about that from our first phone call. I don't deny that it's there, but I have to see it to say that this is the time to make it happen, to make it be a wise expenditure of dollars that you might think are insignificant or not. But it's, I don't just see myself as a stamp to move it through. So that's where I am, but.
I, I have a question. I thought that.
And I, Brian wants to talk, too.
I'm sorry, maybe, let's let Brian talk.
And I think that's going to be our major role in this, this whole thing is to show, uh, the need for, uh, the improvements in our infrastructure. And I apologize for not being there in person today, but we're deep in the part of our busy time and, and it's water sample day, so I have to get those done. Um, but just going around the parks today, looking at the parks, there's, there's an obvious need for infrastructure this past weekend. Uh, at New Wine Park, our electrical infrastructure basically melted down and, uh, wasn't able to handle the demand. So, you know, there's, there's needs, you know, our roads need, uh, replacement in many of our. There's a lot of large, uh, infrastructure projects and, and tying that in with our long-range plan and, um, you know, showing the projects, where, how the money would be spent is, is going to be, uh, basically my job for this initiative.
Thank you, Brian.
One of the biggest issues that I've talked to some people is what's the money going to be spent on? And I couldn't answer that question. You know, the strategic plan is the short answer, and then there's projects listed in there, $170 million worth. So, so we have, we, we paid $200,000 for a strategic plan, okay? And the Conservation Board approved it, so did the Board of Supervisors. And we have that plan, that's the answer.
Do you have a copy?
So, and it's, it's relatively new. And we haven't had this discussion a lot with, with, with the board here. And so I can see if you have those, that question, that's a very fair and straightforward one. That's, that would be the short answer, is that correct?
Yes.
Your understanding?
Um, and just to put a little, add a little more information to that, um, the, the, I, I doubt that the final language of the bond issue, if it, if it goes forward, would state specifically that we intend to spend X numbers of dollars on this and X on.
I understand that, but when people ask me the question, and shortly after I talked to you on the phone, I'm like, I have no idea what they want to spend $40 million on, I didn't know anything about a referendum.
We can provide you with a, a handy list of examples.
You know what I mean, just something, you got to get the information out.
We're all getting the same question.
Yeah, and we're all in the early stages and we're building our energy, so it's great. I mean, I appreciate you being here, Art, I appreciate your comments that you made to begin. Um, I, it's exciting to be at a time when citizens want to make change. I think that's very positive, they want to be engaged.
And I agree, it goes, you know, we can get it on, uh, for a ballot, you know, the voter should make the decision.
Right, well, we'll know, it sounds like Brian's got lots of work to do to get ready. Conservation Board has lots of work to do, you got a PAC forum, lots of work to do there, so.
If you have not received a petition, that, I believe, I believe Iowa law requires that you receive a petition from the County Conservation Board. And I, I don't understand if that has to be a paper document that you receive or.
Kevin, I'm trying to figure. That's what you're working on, Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
So certainly we did that verbally, so if there's, if it's written required, then that would be responsibility of the Conservation Board.
You can just put it down into a letter and then we can, uh, put it as a communication where you receive it.
Would, would the minutes be adequate reflecting that?
Uh, I could, I can verify and reach out to Brian and let him know one way or the other.
Should be in the minutes.
The UTV ATV petition was yoked.
Yeah.
And they were at every grocery store for about, what?
Yeah, not an ATV, uh, board, there, there is a Conservation Board.
One board petitioning another board, so hopefully, yeah.
Five to three, they outnumber you. Although the vote, yes votes were even.
Yes, Brian?
Uh, that's the one thing I'm trying to figure out right now is how that petition needs to come to the Board of Supervisors if it's, you know. So I'm reaching out to some of the other counties that have done it in the past to see exactly how that looked, um, when they petitioned the supervisor, so. Hopefully I'll have that answered this week. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian, anything more, Art? Other information, questions?
No, I have no more information. My only question is, uh, what, what would you like us to do next for, for you?
I don't have an answer to that.
Maybe when we have.
Maybe do whatever you want.
When we have information to provide, we'll, we'll ask to get on the agenda again, so.
Come as frequently as you wish, flood us with information, that's awesome.
Perfect. But the minute show, that you answered. Sure.
A gentle flood.
We'll be happy to do that, thank you.
Flood, thanks, Art, appreciate it.
Anything more from the auditor? Very good, all right. So this is the time when we would normally move to adjourn, but we will not. We're going to, um, ask for a motion to recess because we're going to be back here. We're going to be here tomorrow afternoon, um, working through, um, we have a work session um, under the direction of Ed Raver, I believe, leading us with Eric Schmeckel. So going through the, um, WSPO request. Is there something you wanted to add?
Only on Zoom, right?
Oh, it's only on Zoom that I can hear.
Do you, do you want, do you want a little bit more of an update on the, from the Conservation Board on, real quick? Or do you want to do it another time?
No, no, love to hear more.
All right, so I, I kind of alluded it to it, um, at New Wine this past weekend with the 4th of July weekend, we had a system failure, our electric system completely melted down. And, uh, like, a lot of the campers had to leave because they had no electricity. So we're working on getting that repaired and back up for this coming, upcoming weekend. Uh, I have a crew out on the Heritage Trail at Bridges Three and Six, which is Clay Hill and Durango. Uh, we got a complaint on debris in the bridges, so there's not enough to get there with the equipment. There's, it's, so we are going out and into the water in a small, uh, boat and cutting the debris into little chunks so that if we do get a heavy rain, that it just washes through and, and doesn't affect, uh, anything. Uh, that should be done today. Um, we're having lots of access issues in our river parks with the low river level. And we are working on, uh, getting, um, some dredging projects underway. Uh, so that's, we did make some progress here this past week, so, um, we're, we're kind of excited we'll be able to move forward with that. Uh, it's, dredging projects are difficult, to say the least. Um, we did, the Conservation Board, uh, approved an agreement with the, with the school district to, um, have the outdoor adventures program, which also have a, uh, funding available for, for another naturalist that we have, uh, budgeted for this year. And we also agreed to purchase the property from the city of Sageville out at Heritage Pond. Um, there's been a little, um, hiccup in the giddyup with the, um, uh, new state law that's been passed. And I think Ed is looking into it with Anthony about, uh, road closures and not being able to close a portion of a road. So, uh, we're trying to work through that and get an answer on what that's all about, um, here shortly for you. But, uh, does anybody have any questions for me? It's been extremely busy, we've had actually, uh, record camping, record use in our areas and, and hopefully I'll have some statistics and, uh, some ballot figures about how large of an increase here soon since we had the end of the fiscal year. But use continues to be extremely heavy.
Thank you, Brian, very good.
Brian, is there anything we can do for you?
No, I just appreciate the support and, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, getting some more documents together to, um, kind of show the need, you know, for, um, more improvements in our areas. And we have a, a long list of things that, uh, need to be improved. And you got to remember, our, most of our parks were developed back in the 1950s and a lot of our infrastructure is from the 50s and early 60s, so, um, there are a lot of issues that need to be addressed.
Do you have the sufficient budget to take care of the electric at New Wine?
Uh, presently, because we just started a new fiscal year, so. If it wasn't for that, no.
Okay.
But, so it, it was, we, uh, worked with REC this morning and it was kind of a, uh, what we're going from a 450 amp, uh, service to a 600 amp. We would like to go to 800 amp, uh, except those transformers are not available anytime soon. Uh, so we'll be, we're good, there, I was just out of New Wine and they're doing the locate for the installation of the new transformer. And we pretty much, all of our electric panels out there are burnt up, so those need to be replaced. So it's a, it's a bad thing, uh, unfortunate that it happened on a holiday weekend, but, um, hopefully we'll be up and be able to add, uh, campsites in the future out there, which, uh, there's a huge demand. New Wine's our second busiest campground in the county. And a lot of that goes back to the Field of Dreams and the tourism in Dyersville.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you.
All right, Ed, over to you.
Yeah, back to the agendas. Did we publish and post that? I don't.
We did.
It, it must not be on our website.
It is. It's part of today's agenda.
The last item.
Oh, well, maybe I'm saying it. The agenda's in minutes. Okay.
It's a, it's the last work session listed. It goes, so it's just the very last item, work session.
It's not today, though, right?
No.
Correct. You are resessing today. This was the, um, and working through that with the order.
It must be a di- different process now. Okay, so normally, we'd list a separate one, right? So we're changing, we switched it, because I'm not losing it, right? Okay, so I can normally look for a separate one and a separate item with you, but, okay.
And that brings the question with citizens also.
Well, yeah, it's, uh, so it, it's at one?
It's at one o'clock tomorrow is when you're, this meeting will continue. It will just be by Zoom decided the presenters will all be remote.
Cool, got that. I'm good with the schedule. The process, I don't know if I would think that would be the most easiest for people to understand. Norm, my experience, of course, they'll only then hear that, you know, the agenda's for today, not for other days. And so that.
Yeah, I think the thinking from our office was, instead of receiving two email notifications for supervisors' meetings and subsequent days, when, when the second day was simply one work session, was that we clearly delineated on the agenda for today that the work session is for tomorrow's date.
So do you plan to do this more in the future, or is this just a one-off?
I think this is a one-off right now.
Sounds good, sounds good. Okay, good.
Trying to avoid confusion, you've more or less confused us.
That's so, good, sorry, one-off. It's a one-off, we're good. I will make a motion to recess till tomorrow at one.
Okay. They'll cover these documents. You each have a review sheet.
Oh, yeah.
Jaya gave you.
Right, there, man, I go on top of it.
You each have others Wednesday. Tomorrow will not be a decision day. Um, it will be a work session, and we'll, uh, you'll decide when you would like to take action on that.
Who's leading us through it?
I will be assisting. I am a part of that team. Uh, we are all teammates in that review process, along with Eric Schmeckel. Uh, there may be some other county staff that are also on that call. Um, but, uh, I, I will be, uh, I don't believe that Dawn will be here tomorrow, uh, for that, or at least she will not be on that call with us, on that work session with us, so I.
I'll virtually gather in, and I'm passing it to you.
Right. So I, uh, I have been in contact with the people that will be giving the presentations, and I will be helping to, to do that. There is a space. They will be each thirty minute, sixty minutes, uh, maximum, and then I've scheduled some time in between for any discussion we'd like to have.
It's gonna be a three to four hour Zoom. I think that's a little much, but.
Thankfully, this is a one-off supervisor work. It's the way we're going through these three proposals.
And you need.
I, I need more notice of it. We're gonna have a three-hour Zoom, okay?
Are you good with tomorrow, Jay?
Uh, I have to ask my clients. But, no, I'm not good with three hours, but if that's what it is, I will not let progress go, and it's a one-off. That happens. So, and there's three of us, so.
Well, it's, we're using a scoring sheet.
I, I was aware of those.
Yes.
Yeah, I knew too, but I figured they were just trying to bring me with.
I mean, I, I. Did you already tell the applicants that it's one hour max? Okay, so that's probably fair to, they're preparing and gonna be there, and this is what I used to do for a living.
And we need to score, right? You want us to score.
You, you're going to ultimately, personally, and then as a group, we, we will rank them. Um, you, uh, I, we don't, I, with you, we're not using a one to a hundred. You can use whatever you like, but ultimately, there are only three proposals. You'll select one at some point and move forward with that, uh, in a decision point, and we will, um, you, you can just score them. At the top of the sheet on each one says, where would you rank them, one, two, or three? You can use whatever, the criteria that are on those sheets are the ones that we had in the request for qualifications, and the ones we've communicated to the, the people that submitted the proposal. So that's what they'll be gauging, that they expect to be evaluated by the team on.
Right, we have a motion to recess until tomorrow at one. Do we have a second?
All right, we'll second.
Motion to second to recess until one o'clock tomorrow. On favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, we are in recess. Thank you. Well done.